Good morning, good afternoon, everyone. We normally start in the morning time. But good afternoon. Welcome to the Orange County Board of County Commission Meeting of June 17, 2025. As we begin this afternoon, I'm going to be calling on Commissioner Martina Simrad, who will be introducing her guests, who will bring the invocation. And then we'll ask Commissioner Simrad to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Following the Pledge of Allegiance, our Communications Director, Mr. Jeffrey Williamson, will be reading a proclamation recognized in June as Pride Month. And then we will introduce the Florida Department of Transportation District Five Project of the Year Award, and Art in the Chambers will follow that. And with that, Commissioner Simrad, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Welcome, everybody. It is with great honor today that we recognize a pastor that's coming from the Far East in Bithlo, Florida. Bithlo is a community that is, most of us know, faces some hard socioeconomic challenges. And its partnerships, like with Pastor Torres and Lizette Rodriguez, her director of her church, where we're able to really make a big difference in terms of the community that we have there. So with that, it is my honor to introduce Reverend Lizette Torres. She serves as the Heart and Shepherd of Next Level Church of God in Bithlo, Florida. It's a community-rooted ministry devoted to fostering connection, compassion, and spiritual growth. Her leadership is grounded in grace and humility, and she remains committed to ensuring the church is a safe and welcoming place where every individual can encounter the love of Christ, find belonging, and grow in purpose. With a deep calling to serve, Reverend Torres has dedicated her life to uplifting others, especially those who feel overlooked or underserved. She leads with the conviction that every person carries God-given potential and uses it to build stronger families, neighborhoods, and futures. Reverend Torres also serves as a vital partner in local outreach, working closely with organizations like the Bithlo Pantry to meet the everyday needs of families across the area. She doesn't just stop there. She frequently visits the forests and the woods, where she helps our homeless population as well in East Orange County. Her heart for justice and equity is woven into all she does, advocating for communities like Bithlo to be met with dignity, opportunity, and meaningful support. To the county commissioners and all those entrusted with stewarding our region, Reverend Torres brings not only a voice of faith, but also a voice of hope, reminding us all that together we can create a more compassionate and flourishing community for everyone. Reverend Torres, thank you.
And all glory is to my God that I serve, and I pray every day to Him. And today is an honor for me to bring the invocation this morning, because nothing, we can't start nothing without Him blessing us. So I ask everybody to close your eyes. Father, we come before Your presence. Heavenly Father, we thank You for the gift of these days and for the opportunity to serve our neighbors through leadership and through stewardship. We live off this county and the great state of Florida into Your hands, asking for Your wisdom to guide every decision made in this room. Bless our commissioners with discernment, compassion, and strength as they lead. May their work reflect justice, unity, and care for all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. Let this county be a place where families thrive, communities flourish, and hope is never out of our reach. Surround the state with Your peace and protection, and may Your grace rest upon every home, every leader, and every heart. In Your name I pray, amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Mayor said, there is one presentation or one proclamation and two presentations for this morning. And our proclamation this morning is for Pride Month. Pride Month. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas on June 28, 1969, the historic uprising at the Stonewall Inn became a catalyst for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ+ civil rights movement in the United States; and whereas the month of June commemorates these events while also representing a time to reflect on the progress we have made in the fight for justice and equality for all; and whereas throughout the history of our nation, LGBTQ+ individuals have helped shape America's character, becoming a vital asset to Orange County while contributing to the economic growth and enrichment of our region; and whereas the meaningful contributions made by our LGBTQ+ nonprofits have ensured Orange County's strong competitive advantage of creativity, innovation, and compassionate service delivery; and whereas Orange County celebrates the broad diversity of our community and is proud to be an inclusive and welcoming place for LGBTQ+ individuals to visit, conduct business, establish roots, and thrive; and whereas Orange County's mission is to build a community that works for everyone, where no one is left behind, a community free from violence, hate, and discrimination." Now therefore, Jerielle Demmings, by virtue of the authority vested in him as Orange County Mayor, does hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Orange County, Florida, done and ordered the 17th day of June 2025, signed by the Mayor and all six members of the Board of County Commissioners. Receiving the proclamation is Nicole Parker. Ms. Parker is the COO of the LGBTQ Center. Nicole.
My name is Nicole Parker, Chief Operating Officer of the Center Orlando. And I just want to say on behalf of the Center, thank you so much for this proclamation. As someone who was born and raised in Orange County, it makes me so proud that Orange County sees everyone as human beings. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Next is a presentation of the Florida Department of Transportation District Five Project of the Year Award for the Alafoya UCF Pedestrian Project. Brian Sanders, he is the manager of our Transportation Planning Division. I'm going to ask Mr. Sanders to come up now and make this presentation. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Comp Troller. Thank you for that introduction. I'm personally honored to be here to announce Orange County's receipt of the Florida Department of Transportation's 2025 Central Florida Safety Summit Project of the Year for the UCF Alafoya Trail Pedestrian Safety Project. FDOT District Five includes nine counties, 31 municipalities, and five metropolitan planning agencies. Each year, FDOT awards projects that most represent their Target Zero program, very similar to our Vision Zero program, and together, we will drive fatalities and serious injuries to zero. By 2014, pedestrian fatalities on Alafoya Trail, University Boulevard, and McCullough Road reached alarming levels. And that, along with a notable fatality, caught the attention of former Mayor Teresa Jacobs and the late UCF President, may he rest in peace. I'd also like to recognize FDOT, because Alafoya Trail is a state road, and we needed them to be partners with us. And today, we have Jim Stroes from FDOT. He's here as the Director of Transportation Development, and he's representing the many DOT workers that were dedicated to this project. If you're counting, that's three big agencies, Orange County, UCF, FDOT, all coming together to make this happen. You can just imagine the collaboration and coordination that was needed to make this project work. I also want to thank Joe Kunkel, Public Works Director, Brett Blackett, our Deputy Director. I want to thank our transportation planning staff team. I want to also thank our consultant for that, Luke Engineering, for the study. I also want to thank our engineering design and right-of-way staff and their consultants, AVCON, for the work that they've done. Highway construction and the hard work and dedication that they put to put this project in the ground to save lives. And again, I want to recognize UCF and DOT as our partners. We couldn't have done it without you. If you don't mind, please stand the teams that I just mentioned and to be recognized. Also, the notable fatality that I mentioned earlier is, sorry, Brooke Elizabeth Dawkins, a beautiful academically accomplished student that passed on Alafoya Trail. Brooke's parents, Chris and Laura, are here also. Chris is a longtime member for the Comp Troller's office, and thank you for being here. With that, Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to you for these presentations.
All right. Again, good afternoon to all of you. I do want to begin by acknowledging the Dawkins family. At the end of the day, what we all strive to do, the members of the Board of County Commission, is to make our community a safer place for everyone. And with the efforts of this collaborative between the Florida Department of Transportation, UCF, and Orange County, we have endeavored to do so in this regard. And so I want to formally recognize the Department of Transportation for really what they're doing to recognize Orange County and the work that we have done on this UCF Alafoya Trail Pedestrian Project. This is truly a good honor, a great honor, for our team to be recognized. And as you know, the Board adopted a Vision Zero with a goal of eliminating traffic fatalities and severe injuries and creating safer roads throughout our county. This is a great example of integrating safety principles during the planning and implementation of a transportation project. As the largest university by student population in Florida, we were proud to partner with the University of Central Florida, our hometown university, on this project, which enhances the pedestrian safety of our students. And we do have a couple of presentations that we want to make. I want to take a moment to formally recognize Brian Sanders, who you just heard, who was really the manager of transportation and planning and leading this effort. And then we will formally recognize the Dawkins family. So we do have the first presentation. This is the project award that we received for this overall effort. And we're going to go to the Center to make the presentation. And then I'm going to ask the Dawkins family if you will come up after this first photo opportunity to join us, and we will make the second presentation.
Come on up, if you don't mind. All of you, once you go ahead and come up to stand with the family.
Thank you.
All right, let's give the Dawkins family, transportation team, and our administration a big round of applause. Thank you all so much for your support. All right, last and certainly not least, as you can see, we have some wonderful art here in the chambers with special storytelling and symbolism. To give us more information on that is Vicki Landon. She is the Art and Cultural Affairs Director for Orange County. Vicki?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, all those who do business here in these chambers. I am here so excited to unveil to you what is the 63rd installment of our Art in the Chambers Exhibition Program. This is the art and activism of PJ Sfeda. PJ studied at the Savannah College of Art and Design, where she earned both a BA in Illustration and an MA in Painting. And she began building her career as an artist and instructor in Atlanta for 12 years before returning home to Central Florida. PJ is most recognized for her really passionate narratives that you can see on these walls that illustrate ideas of coexistence between man and beast and planet. And she really pushes the envelope, often juxtaposing really controversial imagery with a classical but still traditional style. You'll see here a lot of commentary on pollutants in our ocean and in our waterways, on the earth healing as the pandemic forced a lot of human activity to reduce. You'll see a piece behind me that notes that in times of natural disaster, you let the horses go, they find safety, and they come back to your property when it's been destroyed after an event. So PJ has been long involved in activism for animal and environmental and human rights causes, but most of her earlier work really focused on the female form in the environment and the experience of navigating our world as a woman. But after the birth of her son, her focus shifted on what we would leave for him to inherit and future generations to inherit. So her stories that she's telling are of pain and hope, and her pieces raise the viewer's self-awareness into their own humanity. And we're really excited to have her here for this installment over the summer for Art in the Chambers. So I hope you enjoy. She's not able to be here with us today because she is teaching. She's teaching art to the next generation of artists in her studio this afternoon. So thank you.
Really, if you get an opportunity to look at these paintings very close up, you will see some things perhaps within them that you could not see from a distance. I know with the tiger in the picture over there, there's a little mouse on the back of the tiger that if you look very closely, you will see what I'm talking about. And there's different little nuances with each one of these paintings that will capture your attention. We do celebrate the artists in our community and everything that they're doing to help make the cultural aspects of our community better for all of us. And so with that, thank you, Vicki, for your comments. We're going to move forward now on our agenda. We're going to move to the public comment period of time. Let me just remind everyone to please silence your cell phones, if you do have them, if you would be so kind as to put them on vibrate. Next, I'd like to invite comments from members of the public regarding topics of interest or concern that are within this Board's authority. Sometimes when people come in, they bring up issues that really are not within this Board's authority. However, there are certain matters which are not appropriate for public discussion during this public comment period. We will be entering into the phase of having our public hearings this afternoon primarily related to land use issues, and each of those will have its own opportunity for public comment. So if you are present to speak to any of those issues regarding land use issues, your time will come shortly. And with that, we will begin the public comment period. Mr. Thal Mueller, do we have any members of the public who have indicated a desire to speak at this time?
We do, Mayor. We have roughly 20 speakers this afternoon.
Okay. And that we do have a full agenda for this afternoon. We're going to give each speaker one minute by which to state your case. And for those who must leave now would be a good time to exit. And with that, let's call the speakers up at this time.
All right, folks, I'm going to call your names in batches. When I do, please line up along the back wall in the order called. Please approach the podium one by one. When you do, begin with your name and address for the record. I will also note that it seems there was a little confusion, and there were a couple of cards in here that were actually related to Item E7, which is the ordinance related to nuisances, which will be heard later in the afternoon. I just want to let you know that you will not be able to speak during this general public comment section, but we will call your names during that ordinance later on. So the first several cards all appear to be related to the UCF College of Nursing Student Group. And I believe we're going to have several groups of students. Two. I've got two.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I want to thank you for your time. My name is Brianna Kisenow, and this is my colleague and classmate, Logan Lorenz. We're here today as student representatives of the University of Central Florida College of Nursing, located at 12201 Research Parkway, Orlando, Florida 32826.
Thank you so much for letting us speak today. We've been working on a public health clinical rotation currently and had the privilege of working in some of West Orlando's communities, such as Pine Hills and Johnson Village, specifically the El Claudia Senior Center and the Orange Blossom Family Health Clinic.
Throughout the semester, we observed a common concern among residents, particularly the seniors, who frequently asked to have their blood pressure checked and had questions about hypertension and how to manage it. This showed us that there's a clear and pressing need for accessible preventative care and education related to high blood pressure in this community and across Orange County.
According to the 2022 Community Health Needs Assessment Report, nearly 30% of adults within the Orange County area are living with hypertension, making it the most common chronic condition in the county. We've seen many of cards in here that were actually related to Item E7, which is the ordinance related to nuisances, which will be heard later in the afternoon. Just want to let you know that you will not be able to speak during this general public comment section, but we will call your names during that ordinance later on. So the first several cards all appear to be related to the UCF College of Nursing Student Group. And I believe we're going to have several groups of students. Two? I've got two.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I want to thank you for your time. My name is Brianna Kisono, and this is my colleague and classmate, Logan Lorenz. We're here today as student representatives of the University of Central Florida College of Nursing located at 12201 Research Parkway, Orlando, Florida 32826.
Thank you so much for letting us speak today. We've been working on a public health clinical rotation currently and had the privilege of working in some of West Orlando's communities, such as Pine Hills and Johnson Village, specifically the El Claudia Senior Center and the Orange Blossom Family Health Clinic.
Throughout the semester, we observed a common concern among residents, particularly the seniors, who frequently asked to have their blood pressure checked and had questions about hypertension and how to manage it. This showed us that there's a clear and pressing need for accessible preventative care and education related to high blood pressure in this community and across Orange County.
According to the 2022 Community Health Needs Assessment Report, nearly 30% of adults within the Orange County area are living with hypertension, making it the most common chronic condition in the county. We've seen many seniors during our weekly visits where they've had conversations about health, medications, and anxieties related to hypertension.
Our proposed solution is simple and cost-effective. Place automatic blood pressure cuffs along with clear and easy-to-understand educational materials at Orange County senior and community centers. These would be available for residents to use at their convenience, along with guidance on what to do in the event of a hypertensive crisis.
UCF is already a staple in the Orange County area, providing services during our clinicals, and we envision this program where we place these blood pressure cups and educational resources at these community and senior centers when we are not present. This would help combat the transportation issues that appear to be one of the largest reasons as to why existing resources are not being utilized.
By placing these resources in county community centers and in senior centers, which already offer free transportation, we can eliminate that barrier and ensure easier access for the high-risk populations.
We thank you very much for your time. We've provided some inserts for you guys to look over at your leisure. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your presence and your words. I'm very familiar with Johnson Village, and that's where I grew up. Yes. All right, so thank you all. All right, we'll move to the next speakers.
Good afternoon, Mayor Demmings and Commissioners. My name is Maya Yasen, and I'm joined by my colleague Sofiana Kai. Thank you so much for the opportunity to allow us to speak with you all today and for you guys to be our partners. We're representing the UCF College of Nursing, and we're here to highlight the growing need for mental health access for seniors in Orange County. There are over 177,000 seniors in our county, and the 2022 Community Health Needs Assessment identifies that senior mental health is the second priority need, yet many face barriers, including isolation, stigma, and limited transportation. Suicide rates and hospitalizations for mental health disorders among seniors are steadily increasing.
We would recommend building on existing county resources by combining mental health care with current senior programs, offering transportation support to mental health appointments, and having UCF nursing students educate seniors through outreach. These simple, low-cost steps can make a big impact. And again, thank you for your time and for your commitment to our senior population and for allowing us to speak today.
All right, thank you for your presence. And we'll move to the next group of speakers. Thank you.
All right, folks, our next batch of speakers is going to start with Franklin Perez, followed by Paul Herou, followed by Jacob Muldoon, Connor Monroe, and Janaka Ford.
Do I start now?
Um, yes, sir.
My name is Franklin Perez. My address is on file. I strongly condemn Orange County Sheriff's Office and killer cops that murdered Luis Lopez on February 8, 2025, and Tyrone Bartley on May 16, 2025. In Luis's case, cops gave false demands to drop the knife when no knife was found on the scene. In Tyrone's case, cops did not give Tyrone time to comply. Instead, they shot him, an innocent man, with a burst of six bullets, all within 30 seconds of cops hitting the front door of the house. Both of these horrific murders by Orange County killer cops show an attitude of shoot first, ask questions later. Justice for victims of police crimes. Fire all killer cops. We need the following. One, civilian review boards with full powers to independently investigate, discipline, and terminate problem police officers. Two, and police qualified immunity due to qualified immunity being in practice a license to kill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. And what I will tell you is that this body does not have the authority to investigate police or law enforcement shootings. They are investigated by either the Florida Department of Law Enforcement or the state attorneys here within Florida. And so we would point you in that direction if you have some concerns about the law enforcement shootings. Okay? All right, next speaker, please.
Yes. Mayor Demmings, Commissioners, my name is Paul Herou. I live at 4765 Arrow Road in East Orlando, 32812, if you want to find me. This last weekend, Central Florida turned out an undeniably huge number of what has been called the Known Kings National Rally. I was at the Orlando City Hall function. The streets were filled with peaceful people of every age calling out ICE and the usurping of the military and local law enforcement. I saw several small children with their parents. I spoke to some of them. They wanted their children to know what democracy looks like. Americans came together in spite of threats of military intervention. And in about 2,000 places across the country, millions of people stood up for due process, the rule of law, and their neighbors' rights. The majority of Americans, in my experience, have always supported these things. They have the courage to stand up and proclaim their beliefs in spite of bullying and propaganda. I believe leaders at every level who show similar courage and devotion to their oaths of office will survive our present problem and continue to enjoy support. This board has done so in the past, and I urge you to continue to do so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Herou. We'll move to the next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jacob Muldoon. I live on 430 East Packwood in Maitland. In the past four months, I think we've seen a pattern of OCSU shooting first and asking questions later. Alex Duran and Paul Ortiz shot and killed Luis Lopez before even realizing he wasn't holding the knife they were demanding he dropped. Reese Whitlock shot and killed Tyrone Bartley in less than 30 seconds of being inside the house. Families are mourning, friends are broken, the community has been changed. Yet the only thing that's happened at this current moment is that Alex Duran, Paul Ortiz, and Reese Whitlock are receiving a paid vacation for murder. Now, we need to do better. Lives depend on it. Cases should be investigated in a timely manner. Officers should face actual consequences. This is how any other job is. Why are deputies any different? In conclusion, I hope the comments from the community and friends leave an impression on the commission. Making sure residents aren't killed in their own house is not partisan issue. Now, while the mayor says that the commission cannot investigate, y'all can apply pressure on the sheriff. You also have the power of the purse. So if you cannot hold OCSO, Orange County accountable, we should not be giving them funding increases, no accountability, no budget. Justice for Luis Lopez. Justice for Tyrone Bartley.
All right, thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Connor Monroe. I'm an organizer with Orlando Against Police Crimes. I'm here today speaking out for Luis Lopez and Tyrone Bartley, two young men from our community who were killed in their own homes by Orange County Sheriff's Office this year. Since day one, the family and friends of Luis and Tyrone have been asking for two things: transparency and accountability. Well, the body cams and the names of the officers have been released. We know the facts of the cases. Now is the time for accountability. That means the officers who killed Luis and Tyrone need to be fired. And Commissioners, I know that you don't have the power to do that. Those decisions that need to be made are going to be made by Sheriff Mina. He doesn't want to talk with us, but he will talk with you. As a matter of fact, next month, Sheriff Mina will be coming here to ask you to approve his budget, just like he did last year and the year before. And when he does that, you don't have to just hand over some $400 million of our money. Before you approve the tens of millions of dollars in raises I know they'll be asking for, you have the right to ask them questions of your own. Questions like, why did deputies address Luis in a language they know he didn't understand? Why were they shouting about a knife when the body cam footage shows there was none? Why did they shoot from outside his home instead of entering it? Why did deputies shoot Tyrone less than three seconds after he opened the door?
All right, thank you.
After giving him no chance to comply? Ask the tough questions when you find the answers lacking.
You are out of time. Are you listening to me? Okay. I want you to respect the time. All right, next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Janacia Ford, and I want to address you guys regarding an issue regarding my youth sports program on with the Orlando Chiefs. And I have been having a kind of a hard time trying to find a place for my kids to be able to practice. I have been working on fields ever since last year, November, December, and it seems that all of the fields in the city and the county are closed at the same time, which makes it hard for the kids to have somewhere to practice at. We've been practicing at this one park, Lake Line Park, since November of last year. No one has bothered us besides saying that the residents do want us to park better. I've asked the parents to park better. Yesterday, I received, I came to the park, and they came around to all of our teams, and they told us to get out of the park. I thought that was kind of mean considering it's a county park. Now, today, we have practice at 6 o'clock. I have nowhere to take my kids. I have over 200 kids in my program and nowhere to go. I've begged Barnett Park to please partner with us to help the community. The kids in the community come from the community. They come from all the city centers that they don't want to go to anymore because they don't want to help the kids. I need help. I will keep coming until I get help.
All right. I will tell you, we do support our youth in being able to have access to our parks. Ask the county administrator to maybe designate someone who can speak with her before she leaves if possible.
Yes, Ben Thomas, our Director of Community and Family Services, is heading towards you now.
Okay. Mayor, as a point of information, she's also in contact with Lamont Bryant Supervisor for Barnett Park.
Okay. Maybe we can find a solution there. All right, next speaker, please.
All right, folks, next batch of speakers is going to start with David Porter, followed by Erin Quinn, Max Bowman, Erica Gomez Teida, Dr. Jim Moyer, and Edmund Angelaro.
Okay, good afternoon. David Porter, I'm back again. I spoke to you a month ago about the Sheriff's Office. First, I want to start by publicly thanking my Commissioner Uribe and her staff for asking the sheriff to meet with Orlando Against Police Crimes. On Monday, we got a response from the Sheriff's Office. They told us no. Over four months ago, Orange County deputies killed two law-abiding, innocent, unarmed men in their own homes, Luis Lopez and Tyrone Bartley. Their murders are documented on body cam videos on the Sheriff's Office website. Luis and Tyrone's lives mattered. They were innocent young men who were murdered by deputies Alex Duran, Paul Ortiz, and Reese Whitlock. Next month, Sheriff Mina will be here to meet with you on his budget request. I implore you to ask the sheriff why these killer cops have not been fired. Do not let the sheriff sweep this under the rug. What happened to Tyrone and Luis was not an oopsie. They were killed graveyard dead. Our community deserves better. And I just want, before I sit down, to say I am the son of an immigrant, and I just want to say immigrants, lives matter. Immigrants are welcome here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Porter. Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Max. I am an Orange County resident. This is my first time speaking, second time being here. And I do understand that there are limitations that can be done as far as this committee and this commission in regards to the police brutality that has happened in our communities. However, things that the commissioners and our mayor and our community can do as far as holding people accountable in regards to the sheriff that will be here next week is they can put the pressure on and they can encourage more reform and accountability and make demands that you do not get an increase in budget until we see an increase in better behavior from those who are sworn to serve and protect us. By not standing with the community and not making an obvious and outward statement to stand with the community, it does leave the county open for liability and lashback from other members in the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Dr. Jim Moyer, Orange Soil and Water Conservation District, 1811 Southern Red Oak Court, COE, Florida 34761. Just over 90 years ago, in the Great Plains, the environmental conditions were so bad that the dust came all the way to the East Coast and actually 300 miles into the Atlantic Ocean. The environmental experts are predicting that climate change, the conditions are going to be very, very similar. If it wasn't for the conservation districts, 3,000 of them in the United States, there probably would be another Dust Bowl. But we've worked on the soil and water, et cetera. But the conditions are going to be very bad. The likelihood is that your children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, when doing their summer vacations, it'll be over 95 degrees about the entire summer. So we have to work together and prevent negative ramifications of climate change. Thank you, God bless you all.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moyer. Next speaker, please.
My name is Edmund Angelaro. I live at 721 Innsbruck Drive, Orlando, Florida 32825. I'm a member of Orlando Against Police Crimes. I'm here to speak up and raise awareness regarding the murders of Luis Lopez and Tyrone Bartley, two Orange County community members who were killed in their own homes by your Orange County deputies. As the FDLE internal investigations continue to proceed behind closed doors, it is abhorrent and shameful that local leaders have remained silent in the face of such terrible tragedies. On two separate occasions, our members have mobilized to deliver public comment at the Citizens Advisory Committee. This committee is supposed to serve as a forum for the community to speak directly with the Sheriff's Office regarding policies and procedures. At both the February and April meetings, our questions regarding policies and procedures that led to the murder of Luis Lopez by Orange County Sheriff's Office deputies Alex Duran and Paul Ortiz were met with non-answers, condescension, indifference, and a lack of a sense of urgency. And to make matters worse, at both of those meetings, only two of the board's nine members were in attendance. This is completely unacceptable. We bring this to your attention because we know that you commissioners are responsible for nominating people to that advisory committee. We demand, if there is no accountability, to not increase the budget for Orange County Sheriff's Office. Justice for Luis Lopez. Justice for Tyrone Bartley and all victims of OCSO police terror.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mayor, if you will allow me to do the one minute in English and then one minute in Spanish, please, for the translation for folks who don't speak English.
I'll allow it.
Thank you. My name is Erica Gomez Teida. I'm with the Immigrants Are Welcome Here Coalition, and I'm the Organizing Director for Orem Hope Community Center. I'm following up on the letter that we sent you yesterday regarding the due process and also to invite you to a press conference that we're holding today in front of the building at 5:30 to bring to light the crisis that has now become a humanitarian crisis for our organizations and our communities that serve in the immigrant communities. We currently have many violations that we are finding. Many people disappeared. We have one person who's been in the jail for two weeks, does not show up in the system, and was actually a passenger in a car. There was no reason for him to have been detained. He got his work permit from the Trump administration but can't afford to have an attorney, and up to now, we didn't find him until a week ago. So we thank you for and appreciate you, all the work that you have done to keep this issue front and center, and we ask that you continue to put it on the agenda, to keep working to make it possible. En español, soy, estoy acá por parte de la coalición de los inmigrantes. Son bienvenidos acá y queremos agradecer a la comisión por todo el trabajo que han hecho para seguir la atención que tenemos sobre las condiciones que están pasando en la cárcel. Específicamente queremos invitarles a ustedes a que vengan a la rueda de prensa hoy a las cinco y media al frente de la comisión para llamar la atención a una crisis que está pasando con estas deportaciones, especialmente las deportaciones que están siendo injustas y están haciendo que las personas se desaparezcan de nuestro sistema. Queremos asegurarnos de que ustedes sigan trabajando. Tenemos personas que han estado detenidas, una persona específica, dos semanas en nuestra cárcel. No aparece en ninguno de los sistemas. Y fue dado la visa de trabajo por la administración de Trump, y no podemos sacarlo de ahí porque no tiene el dinero para conseguir el abogado, y tampoco ha tenido la oportunidad de ser encontrado anteriormente. Les pedimos que sigan poniendo esto, pongan esto en la agenda, revisen los acuerdos que tienen. Gracias.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Erin, organizer at the Farm Workers Association of Florida located at 1264 Popka Boulevard, FL 32703. I want to I wanted to speak to you today about the harsh reality that many immigrant families are facing. A friend of ours, a longtime community member, someone who's lived here for years, worked hard and raised his family, was taken. His family was left to fend for themselves as he was the primary income earner. With no idea where he was, it took us more than eight days, eight painful, sleepless days, just to find him. By the time we found him, he had already had an ice hold, giving us no time to be able to act and get him legal help. Can you imagine what it's like for a child to come home and not know where their parent is or a spouse to not know where their partner is coming home? It's not just about being detained, it's about being disappeared. That's what it feels, that's what this feels like. Our loved ones are not just taken, they are hidden from us. This is one of the many, many, many families in Orange County that are going through the same exact thing. Some are taking longer than eight days, some last weeks without us being able to find them in your system. We want to thank you commissioners for our continued commitment to find a solution to this problem that we're all facing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right, next set of speakers is going to start with Kenneth Smith, followed by Jesse Baskin, followed by Matthew Girkolsky, followed by Walker Smith.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenneth Smith. I am a friend of Tyrone Bartley. I met him back in Miami at high school and we went to college together. And I'm just here to ask for compassion from the community, from the leaders here today. He is a father of one like myself and being in this situation is just really tough to process. I'm, you know, I'm an African American, so I'm not familiar with justice, but I'm here to, you know, ask for compassion and community from the leaders and from the community to just kind of do more research into the case, see how you can help out as far as, you know, his daughter, he's a father, you know, he was a single father divorced from his wife and he was working it out to figure out the best life for himself to take care of his child. And if anything, I'll just ask you guys to at least, you know, look into this and find a way to see if what we can do. I want to ask you what can be done to find help for his daughter as she grows up to, you know, be fatherless and, you know, have those milestones that he won't be there for, that I potentially will try to step up for, but there's more that needs to be done then.
All right. We do have staff from our community and family services that may be able to provide some referral assistance to the family. If you want to privately provide their contact information, you can. That Ms. Van Thomas, is she still here? She's outside. Okay, she's right outside that door and the deputy will point you to her. Okay?
Thank you so much.
All right, next speaker, please.
How you doing? I'm Jesse Baskin. Do I just get started?
Yes.
All right. I'm here to represent Tyrone Bartley as well. Me and Tyrone Bartley are friends. We both went to Fairview together to march in the band. Tyrone was a carpenter. He actually built I-4 and he actually built Terminal C while he was alive. In carpentry, we have a rule, it's called, it's called measure twice, cut once. Unfortunately, when those officers entered the house, they didn't use that rule. That rule is to make sure that you think twice before you cut the piece of wood. When those officers entered that house, they didn't do that. They didn't give him time to react, they didn't give him time to do nothing. If they did their proper research, they would have seen that he worked night shift and when they entered the house, he was asleep getting ready to go back to work that night. So when they opened the door, he was just startled. He threw his hands up. It don't matter. All I can ask you guys, please, whenever you get a chance, it's on social media, just take a look at it. Just take a look at the video and you're entitled to your opinion, you're entitled to feel how you want to feel, but take a look at the video and unfortunately hear him yell and hear the officers yell, "Put your hands up" as he was shot five times. Just compassion, that's all the max of foot. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Also a reminder, everyone, please include both your name and address when you approach the podium.
My name is Matthew Girkolsky, 1701 Lee Road, Winter Park. I'm here because about three months ago, Mahmoud Khalil was disappeared in New York City. Mahmoud was going to be a father and unfortunately, right now, his own baby in New York is without one because he was detained by ICE illegally. He was a legal resident of the United States of America. And unfortunately, if that can happen in New York City, that can happen in Orlando, that can happen at UCF. He was a student at Columbia and he was detained by ICE. So today, I'm asking for the county to reimagine what is doing with 287G and also immigration in general. Why can Winter Springs and Seminole County depotize one officer but Orlando and Orange County cannot do that? Why are we letting them abduct everyday people here in Orlando? Think about the cries of Noor, Mahmoud's wife. Think about the cries of their baby and think about the cries of children here in Orlando right now. Reimagine ICE agreements, please. I beg of you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, distinguished members of the panel. My name is Attorney Walker John Smith, IV. I live at 2608 East Church Street and I represent a number of your constituents in the community, particularly the organizations that helped put on the protests this weekend, including 50501. I'm here today to discuss the anti-commandeering principles that we have in the United States. They're constitutional principles that prohibit the federal government from taking over, taking advantage of our local government entities. We need to reaffirm our commitment to our constituents, to due process. We need to reassert control over our county and steer our policies away from Donald Trump's whims. I'm here specifically to talk about the 287G agreement with ICE. If the feds attempt to leverage their federal funding, you can always withhold your tax revenue from them. That's what California's doing right now. In the case, in case the twelve thousand plus strong coming out to Orlando was not a sufficient enough message, we do not tolerate kings in the United States of America. We demand an end to this 287G agreement immediately. And we ask that you consider this or we will have to consider other people who will consider ending this. We also want to stand in solidarity with the victims who have been the victims of police violence and ask that you issue a formal statement to that regard. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, I believe that was our last speaker this afternoon.
Okay, I'll double check. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public comment period at this time? Okay, then we will move forward on our agenda.
Mayor, before we do that?
Yes.
I think we would be remiss not to establish a date that we can alleviate some of the scrutiny about whether or not we're going to do what we said we were going to do, which was to talk about what's happening at our corrections facility. We're getting reports and the numbers are continuing to go up and our resources are pulled on our best days. We understand that the due process issues that are happening there, to some extent, we're not going to be able to get our hands around, but what we can get our hands around. I think we've got to put a date on the calendar and let the community know when that's going to be.
I'll take an under advisement. Look, we got a lot of issues before, so we will discuss it at some point.
Okay, every day, people are going missing.
Well, I'm not aware of that, but okay.
I spoke with, I spoke with the daughter and waiting outside of the ICE detention facility, but I, and I think that if that's the case, if there's evidence to the contrary, that that's what we should be presenting and we should be able to bed there.
Commissioner, let me just say this, that I do believe that every person who enters into our jail is not missing because of any actions of Orange County government. And so I think to, I don't want to misrepresent the circumstances of what is happening. We know that there are individuals being taken into custody by the federal Immigration and Customs Enforcement offices and they are duly booked into our jail and they are released back to the federal authorities. And we can say that while they're in our custody, you're well aware that we do afford them the opportunity to make phone calls, to contact their family or attorneys and that's right now part of the due process that you're referring to. There are other things that could be done, but as you well know, it rests under the federal system and not under anything that we have control of.
That's, that's correct, but there are two, there are two separate agreements that we're operating under, the IGSA as well as the 287G.
I did say that I would take an under advisement, I would come back with a date.
Yeah, because I understand one of those is required to be imposed based on that state law, but the other one doesn't have a requirement. So if there's an opportunity for us to hold up what our promise to our constituents through the other agreement being scrutinized, let's do that, please, I'm begging.
Okay.
Mayor, I concur with Commissioner Wilson.
Okay.
Thank you.
Same response. While you're in these chambers, attorney, there should be no outward making of noise or any of that, otherwise we will ask you to leave. So that is your warning. All right, with that, we're going to move forward on our agenda. At this time, we're going to move to the consent agenda. I asked the county administrator, Mr. Byron Brooks, if you would present the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two items that will be pulled from the consent agenda. The first is J-3 under Planning, Environmental, and Development Services Department. It's an amendment to a development order related to quadrangle development of regional impact. That item is being pulled to be considered concurrently with the matter that is the subject of a public hearing later this afternoon, that's public hearing B-4. And then the second item being pulled is item F-3 under Community and Family Services Department. It's approval of a Orange County Head Start Program application. That matter will be brought back at the next board meeting. And with that, Mayor, staff presents the remainder of the consent agenda for the board's consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brooks. With the exception of the items that have been noted to be pulled, is there a motion for approval?
Mahmoud Uribe.
We have a motion by Commissioner Uribe, second by Commissioner Moore. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes and it is unanimous. All right, with that, I do want to recognize Mr. Jason Reynolds. I think, there he is in the audience, with the action that just was taken by the board. He has been appointed as Deputy Director of the Planning, Environmental, and Development Services Department, sometimes we refer to as PERS here internal to the county. So congratulations, Jason, longtime employee. Thank you, we look forward to working with you. Okay? All right, and now we will move to the next item on our agenda. We're going to ask Ms. Laken O'Hara to come forward, who will be framing item, the next item on our agenda, our Board of Zoning Adjustment Recommendations.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On June 5th, 2025, the Board of Zoning Adjustment heard eight cases. Seven of those cases were recommended for approval. One case was recommended for denial. The BZA appeal period does not expire until June 20th, which is this coming Friday. Any appeals that are received within the appeal period are valid regardless of any decision by the board today. At this point, one appeal has been submitted for case SE 2502148, Wilma Tompkins, for Sanctuary of Praise. The zoning division will be requesting that this case be scheduled for a separate public hearing. So with the exception of case SE 2502148 that has been appealed, we request that the BCC accept the BZA recommended action and findings.
Motion to approve, Scott?
All right, is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve, Scott?
Second.
Commissioner Scott, the second is Commissioner Gomez Cudero. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes and it is unanimous. All right, thank you. We're going to move to the next item on our agenda for this afternoon. This is A-1, we'll open the public hearing on this item and Mr. Joe Conkle, our Director of Public Works, will be framing this item. And with that, Mr. Conkle, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. This is a petition to vacate PTV. PTV 25-02-001 from Rebecca Wilson of Lowndes, Jurassic, Doster, Kanter, and Reed on behalf of the applicant. The petitioner requests that Orange County vacate a 10-foot wide portion of a 30-foot wide sidewalk easement located near the Westerly property line of the commercial parcel within the plat of Track 17, the quadrangle, containing a total approximate area of 2,614 square feet. The property lies north of University Boulevard and east of Quadrangle Boulevard. This is part of the Quadrangle PD Track 17 PSP, Student Housing DP Development Plan 2406147. And that was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in February of 2025. As a condition of this approval, a portion of the sidewalk easement must be vacated. Our real estate management, environmental protection division, engineering, transportation, planning, and roads and drainage divisions have no objections to the request with the condition that all sidewalk improvements must remain within the remaining 25-foot sidewalk easement. All utility providers have also provided letters of no objection. Approval of this request will have no adverse effect on Orange County. Staff has no objections to the request. Our action requested is approval of PTV 2502-001. The parcel is located in District 5 and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Conkle. Is the applicant on this item present or representative, would you like to come forward?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Sean Klein with the Lowndes Law Firm, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando, Florida, on behalf of the applicant. As stated, this is a petition to vacate a portion of a sidewalk easement that is in connection with a development plan for student housing. As a condition of approval, a portion of the sidewalk easement must be vacated and I appreciate staff with their recommendation and report and I'm here if you have any questions. Thanks.
All right, Attorney Klein, if you'll stand by for a moment, we'll see if there are any members of the public present who wish to be heard on this item.
We have no speaker, so to search for this item, Mayor.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing at this time and we'll ask the district commissioner, Commissioner Martinez-Simret.
Thank you, Mayor.
For potential motion.
Motion to approve PTV 25-02001. Second, Gomez.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes and it is unanimous. And that was seconded by Commissioner Gomez-Cudero. All right, next item on our agenda is item B-2. We'll open the public hearing on this item and we'll ask Mr. Nick Thalmula to frame this item from our planning administration.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is case CDR 2405130. This item was continued from the March 11th, April 8th, and May 6th board meetings. The request here is to amend the Orange Wood N1 Plan Development, specifically a portion located north of Central Florida Parkway, south of 528, east of I-4, and on the west side of Westwood Boulevard to add a specific development program of 160,000 square feet of office use and 300 multifamily units onto the affected parcel identified here. This is also our future land use map identifying the property is designated Activity Center Mixed Use, indicating it's within the I-Drive Activity Center, appropriate location for high-intensity residential and mixed-use developments. As previously mentioned, property is currently zoned PD, part of the Orange Wood N1 PD. It's a requirement in that Activity Center with that land use designation. Here we have an aerial subject property. Property is currently developed with an office development. While a development program is requested for this specific site, there is no specific proposed development for the property. It's simply to allow future considerations of future redevelopment of the site. Here we have a future land, or the planned development land use plan showing the outline of the PD identified there, a general boomerang-shaped property, the affected parcel within, and the specific development program entitlements and standards associated with that PD. As previously mentioned, this amendment was continued and it was continued to allow staff and the applicant to discuss an additional condition of approval regarding existing vested rights that may affect the PD, specific entitlement caps, and future concurrency and transportation mitigation requirements. We have been able to have that discussion with the applicant and on the screen here is what would be proposed as new condition. is what would be proposed as new condition twelve. We would then be proposing to renumber the remaining conditions thirteen and fourteen.
All right, with that, is the applicant on this item present or representative?
Applicant is available, and also just to close that out, staff's recommendations to make a finding consistency with comprehensive plan and approve the amendment to the Orange Wood P D listed, with subject to the conditions listed under the D R C recommendation of the staff report with that new condition twelve and the following conditions renumbered accordingly.
All right.
Good afternoon. Chris Roper with the Ackerman Law Firm here on behalf of the applicant. For the record, the address is four-twenty South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight oh-one, and we agree with staff's recommendation, also agree with the new condition. Up on the screen, I've worked really hard with staff through these past few months that you saw the continuances, and happy with the results, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. If you'll stand by for a moment, do we have members of the public present who wish to be heard on this item?
We have no speakers for this side of Mayor.
All right. Then we'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll go to the District Commissioner, Commissioner Wilson, do you have a potential motion?
I do, but first I just want to thank the applicant for working through all that, and I want to thank staff for coming up with something that I feel like is going to be useful now and in the future. Thank you so much for that extra time. With that, I'd like to move for the requested action and make a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan and approve amendment to Orange Wood N one Plan Development, subject to the conditions listed under the D R C recommendation in the staff report with new condition twelve and the following conditions renumbered accordingly.
Second, Scott.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Scott. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes and it is unanimous. All right, we'll move to the next item, and this is item B three. We'll open this item for the public hearing, and Mr. Thalmula, we'll look to you to frame this item as well.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is case C D R twenty-four oh-five-one-oh-five. This is the Orange Wood N one P D, Westwood at Orange Wood Preliminary Subdivision Plan. This is related to the previous item. This is affecting the same subject property. Per those discussions that the applicant and staff have been coordinating, that new condition incorporated a condition from September eleventh, nineteen seventy-nine that was previously on the preliminary subdivision plan. So this request is to amend the subdivision plan for that property to remove that language from the P S P, previously condition of approval seven A. There's also an amended condition seven B to clarify that multifamily is a permitted use as it was just approved by the board on the Plan Development Land Use Plan for the property. Again, here we have the future land use map, property is Activity Center Mixed Use, part of the Orange Wood N one P D. We have the aerial again, again, same subject property. Here we have the subdivision plan, again, identifying the lots associated with this P S P along with entitlement program development standards consistent with that Plan Development zoning. And with that, recommendations to make a finding consistency with the comprehensive plan and approve substantial change to the Orange Wood N one P D Westwood at Orange Wood P S P, subject to the conditions listed under the D R C recommendation in the staff report. And with that, staff and the applicant are available for questions.
All right, thank you. Coming back here, all right.
All right, Chris Roper, Ackerman Law Firm, available to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
All right, Attorney Roper, stand by for a moment. Are there members of the public present who wish to be heard on this item?
We have no speakers for this side of Mayor.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing. We'll go to the District Commissioner, Commissioner Wilson for a potential motion.
Yes, first I want to thank Nick for being a detective and finding a condition of approval from nineteen seventy-nine, incredible. And with that, I move the recommended action. Second, Moore.
All right, we have the second on the motion is Commissioner Moore. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes and it is unanimous. All right, then we'll move forward now to the next item, which is item B four. And with that, we'll open it up for public hearing. And Mr. Thalmula, it's my understanding that item that was pulled from the agenda this morning, J three, is being opened with this item as well, is that correct?
That is accurate. Mayor, we'll be presenting this Plan Development Rezoning Case and ask for a combined motion for both the Plan Development Amendment and the D R I D O Amendment that was pulled from consent earlier this afternoon. So this is case C D R twenty-four twelve-two-eight-eight. This is an amendment to the Quadrangle Plan Development. This is the affected portion, this is a twelve-point-eight-eight acre property located north of High Tech Avenue, east of Quadrangle Boulevard, south of Corporate Barre-Lard, west of Alafeia Trail, as mentioned within the Quadrangle P D. Request here is to convert entitlements for two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-seventy-five multifamily units and twenty-five thousand square feet of office into seven-hundred-and-sixty-three student housing bedrooms to be constructed on P D parcel tract eighteen A. In addition, there are three waivers from code, one to allow an alternative parking ratio, one to allow additional height, and one to exceed the maximum number of student housing bedrooms as identified in code from seven-fifty to seven-sixty-three. Subject property is designated high-density residential on the future land use map, which does allow student housing development as previously mentioned, zoned P D Plan Development District as part of the Quadrangle P D. Here we have the aerial, this is actually an older aerial. Site is in the process of development, surrounded by a mixture of pre-existing office developments and several other new student housing developments also currently under development or recently entitled. Here we have the overall Plan Development Land Use Plan identifying that P D parcel eighteen A there. Individual sheet identifying the proposed new development program from the previously approved multifamily use into the requested student housing development use. So with that, staff's recommendations to make a finding consistency with the comprehensive plan and approve the amendment to the Quadrangle P D, subject to the conditions listed under the D R C recommendation in the staff report, and approve and execute the non-substantial deviation amendment to the development order for the Quadrangle development of regional impact. And with that, staff and the applicant are available for questions.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant or representative present? He's coming forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Becky Wilson, two-fifteen North Yola Drive here on behalf of the applicant. This was before you all at the beginning of May for the Future Land Use Map Amendment. This is just the next step codifying the zoning, and I just wanted to point out that in the conditions of approval, we do have a requirement to provide security twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and we also have a requirement to work with U C F to provide a shuttle service or otherwise provide a shuttle, a private shuttle service to the university. Here for any questions, Mayor.
All right, Ms. Wilson, if you'll stand by for a moment. Do we have members of the public present who wish to be heard on this item?
We have no speakers for this side of Mayor.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing on this item, and we'll go to the District Commissioner, Commissioner Martinez-Simrad, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I would just like to add with the quadrangle, this is a, this is an area where since, since I've been in office, what we've done a lot is kind of downzone or go down and we're not getting the mixed use that we're hoping to see in the quadrangle, so this is an opportunity for us to really build smart and sustainable, and I don't want to miss the opportunity by putting a swath of student housing there without the support of commercial. So I know I spoke with staff about it, but it's, it's just my hope, you know, with, with people who are considering developing the land that we can supplement the housing that we're putting there with the commercial for the population that will reside there. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, the second is Commissioner Scott. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes and it is unanimous. All right, we'll move to the next item on our agenda at this time. We'll move into C five, C five, and we'll open this up for the public hearing at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. This next item is case D P twenty-four oh-seven-one-seven-seven. This is the Place at Alafeia Student Housing Plan Development, Place at Alafeia Student Housing Development Plan. This is a request to allow for the construction of a one-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-six bedroom student housing development on the twenty-five-point-two acre subject property located on the west side of Alafeia Trail, south of University Boulevard. Here we have the Future Land Use Map, property is designated Plan Development High Density Residential on the Future Land Use Map with a specific development program allowing for student housing. Property is zoned P D, Land Development District. Here's the, the correct zoning map. Property was recently zoned P D specifically to allow student housing. Here we have an aerial of the site. The property was constructed many decades ago as a multifamily development proposal with the, the new land use and zoning in this development plan is to demolish the site as we see here and develop a new student housing development as shown in the site plan here in the screen. This is coming to the board because the code does require all student housing development plans to receive board approval. And with that, recommendations to make a finding consistency with the comprehensive plan and approve the Place at Alafeia Student Housing Plan Development, Place at Alafeia Student Housing Development Plan, subject to the conditions listed under the D R C recommendation in the staff report. And with that, staff and the applicant are available for questions.
All right, is the applicant on this item present? Ms. Wilson?
Rebecca, Becky Rebecca Wilson, two-fifteen North Y drive, Orlando, Florida, here on behalf of the applicant. You know, I feel like in three or four years from now, pretty much every student in U C F will be living in a, in a, in a project that, that I got to be a part of. Just a little bit about this one, the future land use many years ago was changed to allow for student housing, in fact allowed two-thousand-four-hundred student housing bedrooms. During the last round of storms that we had, maybe two, two storm seasons ago, we had, you all may be aware that much of this flooded, and so we are excited to be at a point now that we have already have our zoning in place, and that was also for two-thousand-four-hundred bedrooms. We're bringing forward the site plan known as the development plan for one-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-six bedrooms. But, but what's important is we're, we're able to demolish those units which were flooded and are in the floodplain. We're now able to move the development outside of, of that area which, which flooded along with providing updated stormwater treatment that the, that this did not have because it was such an old development. With that, we have our entire development team that can answer any questions that you all may have. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Attorney Wilson. If you'll stand by. Do we have members of the public present who wish to be heard on this item?
We have no speakers for this side of Mayor.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing on this item and go to the District Commissioner, Commissioner Martinez-Simrad for a potential motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Wilson, with, with this one, can we also please do the condition of the security and the transit connection?
Yes, we do, we have it. I'm sorry to mention it.
Thank you. With that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and finding of consistency with the conference.
Second, Uribe.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes and it is unanimous. All right, we'll move to the next item on our agenda at this time, and we're going to item D six, D six, and we'll open this item up for public hearing at this time. We're going to have Ms. Blanche Hardy come forward, and she'll be framing this item.
Good afternoon, Mayors and Commissioners. Good afternoon. I'm here today at a public hearing for the International Drive Pedestrian Overpass Intersection Analysis and Overpass Conceptual Design Study Public Hearing. That is the actual title of the project. From now on, I'll call it the I Drive Ped Bridge. So we'll go through inspiration, collaboration and configurations for the bridge, the recommendation, public involvement, project funding and the schedule, provide a summary, and this project will request board direction. Beginning with inspiration, the project is located at the intersection of International Drive and Sand Lake Road directly east of the new Interstate Four Divergent Diamond Interchange, and the two projects match each other architecturally by intent. This project has been around for quite some time. The planning department made it part of their I Drive visioning in, for the twenty-fourty district stakeholder options included these criteria connected, complete, authentic, prosperous and sustainable, and we carried these criteria into the scope of services and worked with the Project Advisory Group, which was created for this project. As always, Vision Zero was part of what we do, and this is a safety project. As much as I get really excited and I hope others do about the look of the bridge, it is indeed a safety project. We were here to provide a safe pedestrian crossing with ADA accessibility, able to be used by both walkers, bicycles and other wheeled users, including micro mobility. It had to facilitate emergency response and minimize opportunities for crime. We needed to minimize public property and utility impacts, and we will offer on-grade and elevated connections to the corner properties should they choose, providing they do that under our direction and according to our design standards and aesthetic agreement. The final goal was to create an iconic gateway and for the I Drive districts and create a positive Instagrammable experience. So if you look at the top map, that's the pedestrian shed. You can see that the pedestrian access to this bridge is quite large, and draw your attention to the bottom illustration, this or these are the current average annual daily trips. And so we can see that we have twenty-six thousand A A D T on I Drive. That's an increase of three-thousand-five-hundred trips over the beginning of the project, and we have forty-two thousand trips on Sand Lake Road, and now we're, we're pushing over ten thousand additional trips on Sand Lake Road. So this intersection only becomes more congested and more busy. These pictures were taken by staff during one hour of peak pedestrian and vehicular use. As you can see, we have several interactions between bicycles and pedestrians and vehicles. Traffic engineering does a very good job of timing the signals in this intersection, but when we get to those kind of numbers, you're going to have interactions. So just so I can give you an idea, each one of those crosswalks carries sixty-five pedestrians in a peak hour, so that's two-hundred-and-sixty pedestrians or bicycles occupy the entire intersection in any one given peak hour, and those are very large numbers for us. That's amongst the largest I've ever brought to you, I believe. So this was a collaborative project. It truly was a partnership between the county and the Project Advisory Group, and the members of the PAG are here in, on the bottom, and I'd like to recognize the I Drive businesses and the attractions as well. The Business District, the Chamber of Commerce, the Orange County Convention Center, Florida Department of Transportation, and I, they were lockstep with us every step of the way. They negotiated with us on removing those crosswalks at the intersection and being able to install barriers on the corner to protect people from entering the intersection. They did peer review on all of our documents, committing their scientists and engineers to the benefit of this project. And likewise, the Orange County Sheriff and Emergency Services were there every step of the way as well. And Orange County, Orange County planning, last but not least, this was their idea, so we came forward to engineer their vision. So it began with six configurations, the top rate I was the most popular because I Drive. However, that would be very structurally difficult to, for us to do because we cannot shut down Sand Lake Road. That is a D O T criteria, and so that was not one of the favorite options. Likewise, we looked at initial access options. Likewise, we looked at in, uh, initial access options and they included ramps and stairs and wraparound stairs and escalators which were quickly eliminated because they're notoriously hard to maintain and are typically, do not function well in an exterior environment, and then elevators. So combining those into hybrid options, you can see that we did wraparound stairs with a very shallow rise and very large landings that offer a unique point of view as you go up, if you decide to use the stairs. Those are constructed to allow people with children or people who are less mobile to be able to comfortably go up and have rest areas and also elevators. On the bottom right, we did look at this very large ramp. This was eliminated relatively quickly as well because it obscured the businesses on that particular southwest corner to such a degree it was, uh, really not very good for that area of the district. So part of our, uh, uh, triamp, charge was to minimize our impact. So you can see on the northwest corner at the McDonald's, uh, we, we would impact a couple, uh, parking spaces, mostly all of the corners, most of the impacts are in landscaped areas or in our right-of-way, existing right-of-way. On the northeast corner at Perkins and Skyplex, again, we would potentially impact a couple parking places. On the southeast corner at the Walgreens, the same thing, most of the impacts are either uh, in the landscaping area in our right-of-way and a little bit, you know, protect, possibly a parking place or two. And on the southwest, uh, southwest corner, we had a, a lot of challenges with that particular corner. So over time, we redesigned the access for the bridge on that corner, so we no longer impact that property or the air rights for that property. We will be able to construct, maintain, and operate that bridge as well as the signal that will be moved to facilitate this, uh, option without ever getting into that southwest property. You know, mention that a little bit later. So at the end of this exercise, we came up with two candidates for the structural portion of the bridge and it was the X and, uh, interlocking C options. And the interlocking C had the highest rated scores and the curved configuration is visually very dynamic. It offers a better user experience, you have a lot better vistas and you're just not, you know, walking in a straight line. The configuration has little impact on the intersection corners and the solar cells that we wanted to use to meet the sustainability criteria could easily be installed on a structure of this nature. So moving on to the recommendation, the first thing again is safety. So we performed a safety analysis and looked at the operations. We rendered two selected options to give alternatives as were required and then made a final recommendation. In safety and operations, we had several questions from the public and from the board and from the LPA on the use of elevators. So the elevators are, uh, specified to accommodate a fully equipped emergency response team. That includes an occupied gurney, uh, three response team individuals and the great big suitcases that they carry. We were asked to do an onsite, uh, specific response plan, which we have made a criteria for design. Uh, the, uh, emergency services ask us to put a, a roof emergency access into the top of the design. We had previously worked with them to look at their largest ladder truck and knew that that ladder truck could do anything they needed to do in that corner and, and not be impacted by the bridge, so they certainly can reach that opening. And they can use that opening going back up to, uh, the elevators to unlock, unlock the doors on top. We're required to give them, uh, the key to unlock the doors on top. Once they open them, they have equipment that they can transport anybody that's no longer ambulatory on, they carry that on their trucks, it's readily available to them. And they maintain quick response contracts. And I know that everybody talks about that, but if you just think of the four blocks and how many high-rise buildings we have on those blocks, we have elevators here and we have elevators in the building that I'm in. And so these are contracts that they use regularly. Um, they keep them, you know, this is not a, a, an extraordinary event to emergency services, so they're confident that they're, they're able to respond. We also are adding, uh, emergency generators to be able to provide power during a blackout to keep the elevators running and hopefully to keep the signals running. And if necessary, and with ambulatory people, again, emergency services that's trained in, they do take care of non-ambulatory people all the time. Uh, people could go to the, the orange boxes on the map, they could go to the east and south where there are signalized intersections with crosswalks or to the north where there's a crosswalk. Then we included this illustration of the elevator on the right, so you can see how the hydraulics work, how they can drop, they can use their contractor or they can use their equipment to drop that car down to the ground level and then open it up and get people out. So the first concept was the wave and the, uh, top right corner shows the roof. Uh, the roof reflected the convention center. This roof would be difficult to construct and more expensive and also more difficult to install, uh, solar cells on. So we moved on and, and, uh, selected the alternative two, the drone, which is the recommended improvement concept. The large shield on top is all solar cells. We're talking to Duke, uh, about potentially doing a demonstration project for advanced technology on the shield. And it's, you notice it has an I on it, which made the district very happy. So if you're in a tall building or the helicopter or the Ferris wheel, you'll see the I for I Drive. And now we have a short video, I believe you have to do the video for me, please. You'll notice that the elevators are all glass. This is a safety, uh, measure to allow, uh, emergency services or, or Orlando or the Sheriff's, uh, the Orange County Sheriff's Office to be able to observe what's going on in the elevators. The bridge will be lit attractively and the bottom of the shield that makes the roof will be able to have different lights or, or visions or, um, photographs projected on it. They could be seasonal or they could be whatever the board decides they would like to display. The architects are an international company, they have searched internationally and even Vegas doesn't have anything this nice. This is unique so far. So, moving on, I don't, I have to see if I missed, no, I didn't. Okay, thank you. Uh, we did do public involvement, as I mentioned, we had the project advisory group, we had three meetings in 2022 and then we had a public meeting early in 2023 that the PAG attended and so we could take the public comments back to the PAG. And then the fourth meeting with the PAG later that year in 23, we developed a preferred alternative, again collaborative, this was, this was not just staff, this was a community effort. Um, we had two public meetings, one in February and one in August. We also have a webpage that's still up, we sent notices, uh, mailed notices out to the public. I have done and staff has done numerous presentations with local business groups and local businesses and agencies for this project. And, um, we've taken a lot of emails and had a significant number of conversations with, about the bridge. Uh, as a result of the public meetings and the LPA and BCC work sessions, we were asked to create an emergency response plan, we have made that part of the project. We were asked to elevate the barriers to prevent pedestrians from accessing the roadway and we have worked with DOT and will be able to do that. We have asked to ensure the bridge mesh walls prohibit objects from being thrown from the bridge. This is a Green Book standard, we're required to do that anyway, we would be required to do that to the DOT specifications. We were asked to assess alternative grid locations and we did look at that. There's not really another location within this area that would be suitable for a structure of this magnitude. And we were asked to priorities walking and prioritize walking and biking over cars, that was the object of the project to begin with. And so we have done that all along. We had a work session before you in September of 2023 and at that point, and now we need to finalize negotiations with impacted property owners and enter into property agreements. We have provided real estate with packages to begin that, um, exercise. Uh, we've coordinated with DOT, we have the straw man memo of understanding prepared that will carry into design, that will take care of those barrier walls at the corner removing the crosswalks and the use of DOT's air rights and the closing of lanes to construct the bridge, et cetera. And then we were asked to complete conceptual design, it was, the, the final draft was delivered to you as part of your package for this meeting and we've been asked to present to you and here we are today to do that. So just a, a, a minimum conversation, we did have some challenges on the southwest corner and, and that did delay us for a while, but we went back to the drawing board and managed to come forward with a solution to that. We're not impacting that corner at all. So, uh, as always, we have a matrix, so you can see if we do nothing, it's zero as always. And so the cost of the drone is a 35, a little more than 35 and a half million dollars. To do the wave would have been another million dollars and considerably more difficult from an engineering standpoint. So the design and construction is intended to be funded by the CRA. This schedule is a standard, typical schedule. If we would design and then go back out and get a contract to build, we could get perhaps with your approval, begin at the fourth quarter of 2025, uh, the procurement process and then, uh, overlapping or procurement process into 2028, go into, um, construction ending sometime in 2030. However, if the board chooses to approve the project, we would like to also look at design, build, or construction management at risk. Both of those methods would allow us to move more quickly and we hope would allow us to at least trim a little bit of money off the total cost. So in summary, congestion at the I Drive and Sand Lake Road intersection creates a challenging safety environment that is only getting worse. The interlocking C drone scheme was identified as the recommended alternative, it meets the operational, aesthetic, budget, and iconic gateway criteria that was set before us. The conceptual di, design is indeed iconic and has a genuinely unique configuration. So we, uh, have listed here some of the goals, policies, and objectives of the comprehensive plan that demonstrate that this meets the standards of the comp plan. And we'd, uh, like to ask the board to find the I Drive pedestrian overpass intersection analysis and overpass conceptual design study consistent with the comprehensive plan and to approve the study and direct staff to move forward with design, right-of-way acquisition or, uh, right-of-way discussion with the property owners and construction. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, uh, thank you. I'm gonna open it up for a public comment at this time. Uh, do we have members of the public present who wish to be heard on this item?
We do, Mayor, we have four speakers for this item.
Okay. We're going to, uh, give our speakers one minute.
All right, uh, first speaker is Maria Triscari, followed by Craig Swigert, Stacy Huber, and Tabitha Moore.
Maria Triscari, um, 8/9/30 Jonathan Manor Drive, Orlando, Florida. Good afternoon, Mayor Demings, Commissioners. I am Maria Triscari, President and CEO of the International Drive Resort Area Chamber of Commerce. The International Drive Resort Area Chamber of Commerce fully supports the construction of this pedestrian bridge at the corner of International Drive and Sand Lake Road. As one of the busiest pedestrian corridors in our region, this intersection poses increasing safety risks amid ongoing roadway expansions and visitor growth. Ensuring the safety of our residents, workforce, and guests is not just a priority, it is a responsibility. A pedestrian bridge will offer a much-needed solution, safeguarding lives while enhancing mobility and connectivity in the heart of Orange County's tourism district. I want to thank Orange County staff who the chamber has worked with for the last four years on this project and we appreciate the board's consideration today in supporting this must-needed pedestrian project. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Triscari. Uh, next speaker, please.
Hi, Mayor, Commissioners, Craig Swigert, uh, with Clear Channel Outdoor, 5333 Old Winter Garden Road. Um, yeah, I, I just wanted to share that, yes, we've, uh, been participating in all the meetings, um, and since the last public hearing or public meeting that you, that was noted, you know, the, we have a large billboard on that intersection and we are not a property owner, we own a permanent easement on that location. So with that, we have, you know, um, uh, easement rights on air rights, visibility rights, utility. So it's very complex on that intersection. So we've been sharing that from day one. As we're, after the meeting, we did meet with Mindy Cummings and staff and collaborated on some voluntary relocation, you know, options, but then we were told that they weren't acceptable to the county. So, um, so I just wanted to just make sure to submit, um, you know, our correspondence with the county attorney at the time and with, uh, Mindy as well, um, just stating that if there was a taking on the billboard, it would add considerable cost to the project and just wanted to make sure we didn't get too far without at least noting that and share with you all the correspondence we've had. And we, we support the project for safety and all that, but just want to collaborate with the county, so.
Uh, we understand, it's about the money, right?
Right.
All right, if you'll just give it to the clerk, uh, if you don't have copies, uh, we'll get, uh, copies distributed. All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Swigert. Uh, next, uh, speaker, please.
Stacy Huber, Southwest Corner of Sand Lake and International Drive.
We, we have to have you come to the mic.
Just declining.
Okay, she's gonna decline. All right, thanks. All right, next speaker, please.
I have, I have to go.
She's gonna decline also. All right, with that, do we have any other speakers?
I believe that was our last speaker for this item, Mayor.
All right, so there are no other speakers who wish to be heard on this item. If not, then we'll close the public hearing. We'll go to the district commissioner for a potential motion. Commissioner Wilson has indicated a desire to speak before the motion. Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, I wanna, well, I wanna thank you all and this has been a very long buildup in the project and I, there was, to me, what I had never seen before in collaboration with the local businesses and other stakeholders and residents and two different commissioners because we kinda split the, we used to split the, the line there. And I think it's something that was, um, really incredible outreach in the development of the design. Um, I did want to ask about, um, sort of the DOT meshing of what's happening at their mess there, for lack of a better description. Um, I, I think we sort of know that residents there are very clear of that area, it's, it's highly visited and it's in, it's in a corridor, right? It's one of the reasons why I think the business community wants it to be as beautiful as it's been designed. Um, but right now with the design being so close to the work that's still being done on the I-4 ultimate disaster, what, how is that gonna mesh with this design? Um, and I, the second piece of my question is actually really a simple one. The right turns right on red. Um, can I just pitch the idea of maybe putting a sign up, no right on red, so that we can, okay?
Well, we, we will forward that recommendation, Commissioner. Well, first off, we're probably not, they're probably gonna be almost done before we actually get there. And the design of the bridge, if you notice, the towers have that, that same color, that same bit of elevation above. So when it's all done, the bridge and the interchange are going to look like one project. They're gonna look like they go together because that was part of what we were asked to do and so we worked with DOT to make sure that was what was gonna happen. And, and I know because I go there too and right now it's not great, but it will be.
I, I hope so. I think it's a lot to take in visually for people who aren't familiar with our driving, um, patterns and quite frankly, lack of alternatives. And I fear, I fear for the distractibility of additional elements. So, you know, we'll just have to continue to also pair whatever's happening with an educational campaign. I believe, you know, we can do that with our partners and, in the tourism corridor to make sure everybody knows what's coming and what's happening. And then, um, the last question I had was sort of on the way that, and I know that this is a approval for the study in, in conceptual design, but the funding piece of this, this is obviously very much something that is needed for our tourism industry in the, in that corridor. How does that funding shake out for the general fund or in comparison with our CIP programs?
Uh, the funding is all the CRA, so it, it's not part of the, the, as the CRA affects the general fund, but it's all CRA. We also pursue grants and will continue to do that. So we've pursued federal grants and unfortunately- So we pursued federal grants, and unfortunately, we haven't won yet, but we'll keep chugging at it. And we've talked to DOT. They are close partners. They're in the same situation we are, but I do think that if there's any assistance available, DOT will also assist with the project, because they're, they're deeply vested in this project.
Thank you so much.
All right. Commissioner Uribe, correction, Commissioner Gomez-Cudero, then Commissioner Uribe.
Me first? No. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think you mentioned it, but, you know, for the fact that people are hearing and watching on Orange TV, how will traffic impact or minimize during this construction? Because, you know, there was a widening right there, and there was like terrible traffic there. What, what are we going to do, you know, to minimize?
The, currently, the plan is to construct the components of the bridge offsite, to put a pivot point in the center of the road, which would be done during the very slow hours overnight. Each component of the bridge would be brought in and then set. Obviously, we'd build the towers, which might cause one lane closure, but it certainly isn't going to cause the entire intersection to be closed. Most of the work in our negotiations with DOT would need to be done in the off hours, so we would not be there during peak hour doing anything. We would do the towers first. We would put the pivot point in, in the center. We would then bring those components in, the way that you see the great big I beams where bridges come in. And those would come in, and then we would use large cranes. We would crane them up, set them on the tower and the pivot point, and build it piece by piece. So not in design, that's the real simple explanation. I'm sure the structural engineers will have much longer documents to describe all that.
Thank you. Ms. Blanch, when you said the six parkings, what do you mean? Where are they going to be, the six parkings that you mentioned?
Where the towers are located, we probably will need to negotiate with the property owners on the corners and the businesses on the corners. We will eliminate a very few, six in total, parking spaces. Now, when we get into design, as always, that can go up or down, but it shouldn't be a significant number of parking places, and we have a preliminary assessment from real estate that that will not affect the zoning. So we would not then put them in a noncompliance situation with the zoning regulations.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Uribe, and then Commissioner Martinez and Ray.
Blanch, thank you for the information. I've had the pleasure of attending some of the meetings, and it's been fantastic. It's been years. Gosh, it feels like forever that we've done this. So when you said that the I Drive CRA is going to be funding this project, which is a two and thirty-eight, over thirty-eight million dollars, there are no general fund dollars that are going for this project. Is that correct? Is there enough funding to take care of this project?
As with all projects, we have the preliminary, we budget annually, and you guys approve it, we budget in five-year periods. So the two go into the design is, my understanding, last check, which was only a few days ago, budgeted. The rest of the money will budget as we go, the way that it does with all of our infrastructure budgeting. But the CRA should, we believe, generate sufficient funds to do this project, as well as other projects they have in the district.
And so, and then, you know, clearly, this looks beautiful, and I think it's going to really set a standard for that area. My question is maintenance. So we build it, and it looks great. What's the plan? Because if I don't, I was trying to go back to my notes, and I know we had a briefing. We're anticipating opening at 2030? Is that the goal?
We would like to open it sooner.
You both, you both did the head, you know?
Twenty thirty is what I put in the.
Ideally, that.
If we do it traditionally, yeah, that's where we are. We'd like to go sooner.
Okay. And so after that, would the CRA maintain it also? Because you think of the elevator, you think of cleanliness, you think of, you know, we want to have a stellar product that's going to continue as, it's a welcoming. I will say, I've been to the bridge in Vegas, and, you know, and so it's not necessarily kept up as well, but I think we have a different standard here in central Florida. So is that part of the continual funding through the years that will qualify under the continued CRA funding?
It would be part of the district, and so therefore, it would be part of the CRA, and they would maintain it as they do other improvements of this nature within the entertainment and convention center district.
Commissioner, if I could just add, thank you, Miles. International Drive CRA currently sunsets in 2028, so there will need to be a policy discussion by this board regarding the future of the CRA and any possible expansion, you know, to obviously, you know, discuss the types of projects that would be eligible or the board might desire, should the CRA continue beyond the current sunset date. So future policy discussion for this board.
Okay. So what we're approving today, we're just approving the design study, and there's enough money to do that? Because if we're talking, it's set to, if it's set to sunset in 2028, this project, as you explained, will be in phases. Is that imperative before we move forward, or can you explain that, John, on how that will affect this project?
So Blanch's response earlier was accurate. There is budgeted funding in the CRA today to fund the design. We believe there's capacity within the CRA to fund it. Have to probably look at the math a little more closely, whether or not the CRA sunsets, and whatever residual funding may be available in that to be able to program towards this. Or obviously, should the CRA be extended? Again, this is obviously one of those projects that could be funded well beyond, including the operations of it as well. So, but again, your decision today is only to approve the study and move into the design, which is currently budgeted. There would be a future budget conversation and action by this board with respect to construction.
Do you have a timeline of when you anticipate that conversation?
Well, I think certainly with respect to this particular project, Blanch laid out the schedule, you know, and again, depends on the mechanism for.
I meant on the CRA, not on this.
Of the CRA, certainly before 2028.
Well, clearly. Thanks. That really narrowed it down. So, you know, well, I think it's important, because these folks have been working a lot on this project, and so I think that's a very valid conversation that probably should not be waited until.
Well, no, and I, and they certainly, you know, it's not something we are delaying, but obviously, it is an important public policy discussion. It takes some time to lead up to it. So both with this board, but also with the stakeholders in the district. So those are conversations we will be having, I mean, as we're in 2025, so I would presume sometime over the next year to year, you know, to two years.
Okay. Sounds great.
I've been asked to remind you, because you sit as the CRA, we are asking for the ability to design, acquire right away, and construct, but because you see, you are seated as the CRA, at any point, if that becomes not your desire, you have the total ability to stop it whenever you feel like it, or whenever you vote to do so.
Appreciate your due diligence and information. Thank you.
Commissioner Martinez and Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. This project really excites me, because I love how the funding is being used, where we, this is a great example of seeing how the tourism industry and having a tourism economy can contribute to improving our quality of life. So I'm, you know, congratulations on a great Instagrammable bridge that now adds value to our community with increased safety for our local residents, our businesses, and our tourists who visit us. Congratulations.
All right. We'll go back to Commissioner Scott for a potential motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second, Uribe.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. All right. We'll move forward. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll move forward to the next item on our agenda for this afternoon. E seven, E seven, we'll open the public hearing on this item, and we're going to ask Attorney Joy Carmichael, the Assistant County Attorney, to come forward. She'll be framing this item. With that, Ms. Carmichael, you are recognized.
Joy Carmichael, for the Assistant County Attorney's, well, for the Orange County Attorney's Our purpose here is to consider an ordinance for regulation of fireworks. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide for effective enforcement of the state of Florida's provisions related to the permitted use of fireworks in Chapter 791 Florida statutes by amending Chapter 28 of the Orange County Code to create Article Six entitled "Fireworks", adding new sections 28 through 128 through 28-140 related to the use and discharge of The background for the proposal of this ordinance is a concern that has been raised based on residents' complaints to the board about an alleged illegal use of fireworks in a neighborhood, and the goal is to provide for effective enforcement of the Chapter 791 Florida statutory provisions. The law that generally governs fireworks is found in Chapter 791 Florida statutes. It regulates the sale, use, and storage of fireworks, and the general summary of the relevant provisions includes that it requires uniform application throughout the state. It defines fireworks as any combustible or explosive composition or substance, and it actually lists items specifically excluded from the definition fireworks, and it provides for enforcement of Chapter 791 by local law enforcement departments and officials charged with enforcement of laws of the state. Chapter 791 also allows counties and municipalities to adopt reasonable rules and regulations for the granting of permits for the supervised display of fireworks by the following groups: fair associations, amusement parks, and other organizations or groups of individuals. In addition, Chapter 791 does not prohibit the use of fireworks solely and exclusively during the following designated holidays: January 1st, New Year's Day, July 4th, Independence Day, December 31st, New Year's Eve, and it requires uniform application throughout the state. Local governments are prohibited from adopting regulations and laws after March 8, 2007 that directly prohibit or interfere with the following state's safety standards or the right to purchase, sell, use, or possess consumer fireworks. The proposed fireworks ordinance incorporates into the code the prohibitions of Chapter 791 and provides the following: general prohibitions against the use of fireworks; it includes the municipalities of the county within its territorial scope of enforcement; it provides exemptions, allocates responsibility for noncompliance to individuals; and it provides for enforcement and abatement of the illegal use of fireworks as a nuisance. Key elements of the proposed ordinance include a general prohibition against the use of fireworks as follows: no person is permitted to use, explode, or discharge fireworks in the county unless the person first obtains an appropriate county permit for the public display of fireworks or pyrotechnics, as provided in Section 21-75 of the Orange County Code of Ordinances, or the use is by a railroad or other transportation agency for illumination or signal purposes, or the use is associated with quarrying, blasting, or another industrial purpose in accordance with Section 791.04 Florida statutes, or the use is in conjunction with a bona fide agricultural use, as provided in Florida statutes, the use is on a designated holiday, the holidays that we stated earlier, or the use is allowed by Chapter 791, as it may be amended from time to time. The ordinance also designates the prohibited use of fireworks as a nuisance. The use of fireworks on a day or in a manner that is not allowed by Chapter 791 Florida statutes is prohibited and shall constitute a nuisance. The ordinance will provide for enforcement of the ordinance as follows: it will allocate responsibility for noncompliance to individuals; it will provide for enforcement and abatement of the nuisance; and any person may bring a complaint alleging a prohibited use of fireworks. Referral of fireworks complaints will be to the sheriff's office for personal investigation. If the investigating officer finds probable cause to believe a person is in violation of the ordinance, the investigating officer may issue a written warning for the person to cease and desist the activity, or may issue a citation. If the person does not take corrective action to cease and desist from the activity stated in the written warning or in a reasonable time, which is defined to mean five minutes or to be immediately in consideration of the circumstances if there's a risk to the public health, safety, or welfare, the officer may issue a written civil citation, which is punishable by a fine as follows: $200 for a first offense, $400 for a second, and up to $500 and a mandatory court appearance for a third offense and each subsequent violation. The action that we're requesting is approval of the ordinance as advertised, except that we want to provide a few proposed revisions to your attention. These provisions relate to requests of the municipalities. Most of our municipalities have their own ordinances that provide a permitting process for obtaining a permit for the public display of fireworks, and they, for those who did respond to us, they asked whether we would consider adding that to the ordinance, just as I mentioned earlier. The ordinance will provide for, it's not a prohibition, if an entity or a person has a permit from Orange County to display fireworks for public use, you know, a large public display, they ask for a similar provision for the municipalities, and the language is here. And another instance is where a municipality may have its own display of fireworks, or it may be provided by an authorized contractor. They ask for a, that to be basically exempt from our ordinance as well. Their request is to essentially provide an exemption if a person first obtains an appropriate permit for the public display of fireworks or pyrotechnics, as required by a municipality or a special district. And the second, the second request is that the use is a public fireworks display conducted by a municipality, other government agency, or an authorized contractor of a municipality or other government agency. And then we propose a catch-all. In the last exemption that we had, we revised that to state the use is allowed or exempted by Chapter 791 Florida statutes or any other provision of Florida law, as it may from time to time be amended. So those are, those are presented as your, for your consideration, along with the proposed advertised ordinance.
Thank you.
So the action requested is approval of the proposed ordinance along with the proposed revisions that we showed on the screen pertaining to nuisances in Orange County, Florida, amending Chapter twenty-eight of the Orange County Code to create Article six, adding new sections twenty-eight dash one-twenty-eight through twenty-eight dash one-forty related to the use and discharge of fireworks, providing definitions, providing a scope of territorial application, providing prohibitions, providing exemptions, providing responsibility for noncompliance, providing for enforcement, providing for appeals, providing penalties, and providing an effective date in all districts, and authorization for staff to correct any nonsubstantial grammatical or scrivenerous errors within the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carmichael. With that, I'm going to open it up for any public comment. Do we have members of the public present who should be heard on this item?
We do, Mayor. We have three speakers for this item.
All right. Each of the speakers will be given a minute on which to make their comments. And so we'll call them in the order in which we received them, perhaps.
All right, our first speaker is going to be Jill Sharga, followed by Denise George and Ryan Holahan.
I just took three Tic Tacs, so I am flying right now. My name is Jill Sharga. I live at twenty-six seventeen Overlake Avenue. My mom is here. She lives on Venice Drive. Next month she'll be ninety-six.
Oh, wow.
Yes, isn't that nice?
Yeah, it is very nice.
So where were we? I was here in February. And this is the bomber. This is his action that we had, just to remind you, in February. Each bomb and each time that I personally heard, I wrote on this big giant calendar page. We were here on the twenty-fifth. And then March, sorry, sorry. March looked like this, very busy, March. This guy is shooting off bombs and mortars to our homes, a hundred and five homes on our block, sometimes two and three times a day. That was March. This is April, sorry, April, very busy, April. Look at that, April. Here we had police that came up to his house and we filed a police report. I have a number. That was when we had the cops there. And then the very next day, he's got three bombs that are going off, on the very next day. Four bombs there. This is a really super huge bomb. This one, I thought maybe something like a plane exploded into a house. That was April.
All right, Mayor.
Okay.
You know, you're out of time. That time goes quickly.
And we thank you for your time.
We got it. Thank you. All right, we're going to go to the next speaker.
Thanks, everybody. Hello, Denise George, four oh-two-one, Orkney Avenue, Orlando, Florida, three two eight oh-nine. I love that this is finally coming to the forefront because it's been way out of control. But the one thing that is not being looked at and not being addressed is the fact that illegal fireworks are being sold in Orange County, actually throughout the state. I've talked to our local joy, thank you, local fire marshal, state fire marshal. Once it leaves the state fire marshal, comes to counties for permits, what's being sold in the tents is not being inspected. We have got to inspect these tents. Launchables, projectiles, fireworks, standard fireworks, M-80s, which were rattled all over my roof this New Year's Eve. M-80 with mortars, that is the box, the Saturn missiles, that's the box. It shoots multiples, that's what my neighbor was doing, this is what riddled my roof. Ron Dillard, which stayed in fire, Marsh Office, said that, yes, it is seventy-one, seven ninety-one point oh-five. We've got to incorporate inspecting these tents. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That time goes quickly. All right, next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Afternoon.
Commissioners, appreciate you guys taking the effort to put this ordinance together. It's taken a long time to get here, and we appreciate you guys putting everything in to getting it done. I would ask, when you look at the state statute, one of the provisions that it does not apply to are smoke bombs. And so we're already dealing with our favorite neighbor and smoke bombs. He's setting them off multiple times a day. So given that the state statute does not allow for that as part of the definition, we would ask that we could add that to the ordinance just to kind of cover our tracks if at all possible.
All right, we'll get the county attorney to opine on that shortly.
My name is Ryan Holahan. I'm at four one one four Waterfront Parkway.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, stand by. Do we have other members of the public present who should be heard on the side?
I believe that was our last speaker, Mayor.
All right, then we're going to close the public hearing portion. I will ask, I see our fire chief, soon to be fire chief over here, Chief Anthony Rios, and our fire marshal, Chief Farret, is here. And let me do a couple of things. I'm not sure which one of you might be able to speak to the inspection issue that came up, all right? The chief quickly designated the fire marshal to speak to that, so come on up. And then I'm going to ask the county attorney or Ms. Carmichael to maybe opine on the issue that the citizen brought up just a moment ago about the smoke bombs, as he characterized them. All right, Ms. Fire Marshal.
Good afternoon, William Fire Marshal. Inspecting is our responsibility. We only can permit sparklers. It's actually a term used in the statute for sparkler permits for the tents that sell things. If something else is being sold at a tent, that is the sheriff's office enforcement under the statute, Chapter seven ninety-one. It's a criminal act to sell those items without having a proper permit, and we don't permit those in this county. So that would be the appropriate avenue to seek enforcement.
All right, do we have a sheriff's representative here today? Okay, there is. Come on up. You can address the issue from an enforcement perspective on illegal items being sold under the tents and how the sheriff or the sheriff deputies will do enforcement in that regard.
Good afternoon, Major Commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Jose Campa. I am an Assistant Sheriff's Office Attorney, twenty-five hundred West Colonial Drive. When it comes to inspecting the tent, if we get a complaint, obviously that somebody is selling illegal fireworks, that is something that our deputies can respond to. It is in statute as a criminal offense. We don't get that many calls regarding illegal sale of fireworks from a tent, but that is something that we can investigate if we get the call.
Okay, thank you. And given the question that was asked by the last gentleman who spoke during public comment, I believe that addresses his issue. And what I'm hearing you say is covered on the Florida state statute and not necessarily needed to be included in the county ordinance.
For the smoke bomb?
Yes.
So the Florida statute specifically exempts smoke bombs from the definition of fireworks. So it's not controlled under the Florida statute. So we would need a county ordinance to specifically define what the smoke bombs would be.
Okay, Ms. Carmichael, perhaps you can address that if we need to add something into our language that becomes a life, health, or safety matter that would need to be included in the county ordinance.
Well, as Mr. Campa stated, smoke devices are exempt from the state statute. And our ordinance is an incorporation of the state statute. We wouldn't be able to regulate something as a firework that the state says is not a firework. And that's what the state statute says. That smoke device is not a firework.
Okay, so then that may be a potential loophole for this individual who, as long as it's smoke, I'm not going to say bomb, because if it's a bomb, then that's something different, undefined on the statute. And while it may release smoke, it may not constitute what is considered a bomb.
Yeah, the state statute uses the term smoke device.
Okay.
And it does have a description of the composition of the pyrotechnic amount, but we can't measure that, you know.
So then the best thing for our citizens to do is if they see something that they think may be unlawful is to notify law enforcement and let law enforcement respond and make a determination at that time whether or not it fits within the confines of something that is illegal.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so we talked through that. Thank you. I think at this point, there was a question, I think, also that came up that might have been for the county attorney. Didn't write down the issue verbatim, but are we covered from a perspective of if a municipality needs to do enforcement or be exempted? Are we sufficiently covered in what is included in the proposed ordinance at this time?
So our ordinance provides that this ordinance will apply countywide. But if a municipality maintains an ordinance, this is in our charter, if a municipality maintains an ordinance covering the same subject matter, activity, or conduct as this county ordinance, then this ordinance shall not be effective in that municipality. So ultimately, that would be a determination that would be made by the legal counsel for whichever municipality. They would look at their code provisions and determine whether this proposed ordinance or this ordinance would be effective within their jurisdiction.
Okay. And just to share with the audience, from my perspective, I've been obviously the Orange County sheriff, responsible for enforcing the laws in the county, and I've been the chief of police in Orlando. And I can tell you that because sometimes of the confusion with the jurisdictional boundary or when there's no confusion about who has the jurisdictional authority, sometimes they're so close, especially when we talk about dealing with a firework, that it can be a nuisance or create a hazard for those in a near proximity. And so from my perspective, I wanted to ensure that it did, this ordinance covered both the unincorporated area and incorporated areas if that incorporated area municipality or township did not have a respective ordinance. Because, you know, being on the enforcement side in the real world, when either my police officers or deputy sheriffs were out and encountered situations, they really needed the breadth of authority to be able to address the issue before them. And so I think in this instance, the fact that this ordinance is covered countywide with some exception, I believe is in the best interest of the public. And so with that, I'm going to open it up to members of the board for questions or comment. I will start with Commissioner Uribe, followed by Commissioner Wilson.
Actually, I'm going to pass and wait till the end since the issue has gone with, I apologize.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, thank you. I just, I had a follow-up question for the sheriff's department. And if I'm understanding, the public commenter, who I thought this was very interesting, I presume there was some kind of a permit that was issued for these tent vendors that you see all over. But what you're saying is that there's really no interaction with the sheriff's department unless somebody makes a phone call and says, I think they're selling something illegal?
Yeah, I don't believe we have a process in place where we inspect automatically all the tents selling fireworks.
So anybody can pop up a tent and put out a firework? And if there isn't like an astute resident that says, I think that might be illegal, then we're all just waiting for something bad to happen?
I believe there's a process for this tent.
Well, that's the fire marshal. Let the fire marshal kind of respond because they may go out and do proactive inspections. But we'll ask the fire marshal to come back, if you don't mind, attorney.
So all fireworks permits, fireworks tents have to be permitted, not only for the tent but for the sale of fireworks. We inspect both. We go out there, inspect them at the time, and they can.
But that is if they come to you and say, I need a permit.
Well, true, certainly, and that can occur.
So if I want to have an illegal, I mean, I'm just kind of playing this out in the way that I think we understand that it may be happening unless we try, if we take a look. If they come to you, they're doing the right thing, they get the permit, then you know what they have.
At the time of the inspection, yes.
Okay.
And just talk a little bit about the posting of the permit.
Well, the permit's not, I mean, it's in the fast track program. You'll see the tent permit in there for that, so you'll know that somebody has a tent permit. Fireworks permit, it's not publicly available. You couldn't see that, or of course, you can always contact our office to make sure there is one present. We've had in the past where they've gotten the permit for the sparklers and then turn around and put illegal fireworks in there. That's been more common than.
That's what I think is happening. I mean, I wasn't going to come right out and say it, so I'm glad you did.
No, that has occurred in the past, and that's where we're alerted by the public and we contact the sheriff's office for enforcement.
Okay. You know, and I guess, I think the point that I'm trying to make, and hopefully someone with a bigger brain can help me with this, is that I feel like we're putting our residents sort of in an enforcement position if that is the only way for us to really know if they're doing that swap out once they get their permit. And I, I mean, I would support, hopefully, some other mechanism if there is one available that's being used or that has the ability for us to ensure that that's not happening, just waiting for either something to go wrong or for someone to have to call nine-one-one if they have traced back a problem to a particular tent. It wasn't really a question. It was more like a statement of, I think there's a gap here. I think there's something that we can potentially address if there is a way.
In the past, and then we could do it again, certainly we will do it again, but we do stop by unannounced. It's not the only time we go by at the time of the permit being issued. We do stop by unannounced to see. Hit or miss, you know, if they don't have it out or they see us coming and they put it under the table, that's difficult for us to deal with. It's not just a one-off thing, but, you know, it is very difficult for us to police everything and everyone. It's, you know, we are dependent on people. If they see something, it's a legal cause. If they're, if people are that concerned, I think they know what that is. I mean, a sparkler is quite different than a fireworks, so.
Right, right, exactly. Well, thank you.
Well, and I will tell you that our citizens seem to have an appetite for purchasing, you know, things that explode. You know, you can hear it on any of these holidays, including gunfire, you know, that happens. Celebratory gunfire and all of that is also unlawful, and it does require some enforcement. And the citizens have to be active in that process. If they hear it, see it, is to report it by calling nine-one-one and letting the appropriate authorities respond out to it. So I would encourage that as well. From time to time, I can tell you during my law enforcement career, law enforcement will be proactive and go out and look to do enforcement, you know, impose as purchasers or buyers to make certain that these vendors who set up these tents are operating lawfully. But I will also tell you that under the state law, I think that our state statutes are somewhat liberal.
Yeah, I agree.
In this regard. And some of this will need to have the state toughen up the laws. And there have been lobbying efforts over the years to try to get the state statutes changed to where they're tougher. But that's always been an uphill battle, quite frankly.
No, but that actually makes me feel better to hear that there's potential enforcement activity that we don't necessarily put out there for the public to know is happening so they can get it done.
It's not broadcast, but I can tell you because of my past history that there were times we will be proactive, both the city of Orlando and with Orange County. All right, Commissioner Gomes Caderro.
Yeah, it's a good question. If this is approved today, when is it going to be official?
When will it be effective is the question, Ms. Carmichael.
This will take effect pursuant to state law. This will take effect pursuant to state law. So after it's filed here, after you make your decision, sent up to the state pretty quickly and within about 10, maybe a week, a week and a half. Yeah, 10 days we typically expect that they, once this is filed with them, it's effective.
Thank you.
So it might happen before the 4th of July, is what she's telling you?
Yeah, that's likely.
All right. Commissioner Uribe.
Um, Fire Fire Chief, I'm I'm sorry to make you walk and get your steps in today. Could I ask an additional question? Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal, yes, Chief Rios? Clearly, you want to pass the the mic to him, so. I know there's so many chiefs in the room, which is really awesome.
He's counting days before he's the full fire chief, you know?
Yeah, I tried to get out of it, sorry.
Um, and I'm sorry to continue to ask about this. And clearly, um, do you know roughly how many permits we issue in the county for these pop-up sales locations? Is it hundreds? Is it a thousand? I mean, it seems like around these holidays, we see them everywhere, right? I mean, they they put their tent up clearly well in advance, and just curious to know.
I didn't look before coming out here. I would guess around 60 to 70, off the top of my head.
And so knowing that once that permit is issued, now the the enforcement side comes on law enforcement, do you know if there are, are there active inspections that happen? I know that there's time to time where people call in and so forth. But I want to also preface, as someone who grew up here, okay, I grew up in Pine Castle. And I'm sure everyone on this board can attest, who didn't have a friend who said, I drove up to South Carolina and got fireworks. So I drove up to North Carolina or Kentucky where clearly the rules are much more looser than they are here in Florida. So just curious to know, um, is it is it something actively that they do? Clear, and and also, you know, Fire Marshal, when you were saying, when they see you coming, it's quick to just hide it, but I'm sure that there's other forms of law enforcement to to just hopefully engage. And and just thinking as a public safety factor, really, more than anything.
Yeah, Commissioner Uribe, I I don't have any information specifically of whether or not we have a task force that around the holidays goes out and checks. But I I will tell you, I will check with the other counties and the other sheriff's office to see how they handle the the inspection of these tents and see if there's any standard that it's out there. But I personally don't have any information about whether or not we create a task force around 4th of July weekend to go check on these tents, but I can follow up with that.
Okay, and for the constituent who came out today, and thank you for sharing that. One thing about this ordinance is we all, you're in 32809, so Pine Castle? Taft, or what, didn't know what what area you were. Oh, Oak Ridge, right, because I'm 32839. One, one of the things we tend to see is, yeah, it's on the 4th of July, but it's like a week before this starts and it goes even after. And then you see this also around the holidays, yes, the 31st, but for some reason, Christmas starts. And this ordinance will be able to help, you know, as you call it in, for safety precautions, which is something good that we're doing today. So I just wanted to alleviate, it's something we're all concerned on. You hear about this, and we appreciate the Fire Marshal and the Sheriff's Office, you know, recognizing that. Uh, Mayor, if if it's possible, am I able to do the the motion? Okay.
Um, just a moment, I'll go back to you. But I will say to those who have joined us that this is concerning to us. You know, you all came here on multiple occasions from various communities who unfortunately had to endure a a bad neighbor who wasn't very neighborly, who was really threading the needle on whether what he was doing was lawful or not. But we heard you, and our ultimate goal here is to make our community safer for everyone. And we believe that by passing this ordinance and that we will be able to do that by working hand in glove with you. Law enforcement will only be as good as the eyes and ears of the people out in the public. So if you see something that doesn't look quite right, you see a tent, certainly make it known. Our Fire Marshal's office, we've added staff to our Fire Marshal's office, and they're doing a lot of great work here in the community. But I want you to know that our board did take this very seriously. And it just took time to get to this point with the research and everything that is necessary to to do the right thing here. So if you ever have the opportunity to have a conversation with any of your state elected officials, the state representatives, uh, local senators, share your concerns with them also, because again, I think if there's any gap here, it rests within the area of state statute and not the local ordinance. We are a subdivision of the state, and and therefore we, uh, in many ways have to make certain that whatever we do is consistent with what the state does and requires and not inconsistent with that. And that unfortunately, there's some gaps that still remain that I think could be tightened up from a public safety perspective. But without the willingness of our state legislators, it'd be difficult for us to get there. Uh, so with that, Commissioner Uribe, uh, if you'd like to make the motion, entertain a motion.
Yes, and I also want to thank the residents. You all made this happen. Now we can have cake, by the way, okay? She made a cake, no more bombs. But and and thank you, because like like the mayor just said, this is what's good government and local government for. So with that, I proudly make a motion for approval.
Second, Wilson.
All right, we have a motion and a second. The second is Commissioner Wilson. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. A motion passes and it is unanimous. All right, thank you all for your presence this afternoon. We still have other work that we need to do, so we're going to move forward on our agenda. With that, we're going to go back to what typically happens in the morning session to our discussion agenda. And I'm going to call on Ms. Carrie Mathis, the manager of our procurement division, who will be coming forward to make a presentation on a procurement item. With that, Ms. Mathis, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The procurement committee has evaluated proposals for engineering services for ozone and facility improvements for southern regional water supply. I am requesting board selection of one firm and an alternate, as well as the requested action on the screen. Commissioner Gomez-Cordero was assigned to the procurement committee.
All right, with that, Commissioner Gomez-Cordero, do you have a potential motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move for the selection of Hayson and Sawyer with 503 points, with C H A Consulting, Inc., with 442.50 points as the ranked alternate, as well as the requested action on the screen.
Second, Scott.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes and it is unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move to the next item on our agenda. And this is an update on the 2025 hurricane season. And we're going to ask Chief Laurale Avery to come forward, the division chief from Fire Rescue, who is the director of our Office of Emergency Management. No action is being requested on this today. This is primarily for information for those of us at the board. And with that, Chief Avery, you are recognized.
All right, good afternoon, your favorite subject, I'm sure. So, uh, let me get our PowerPoint up.
As when I get 96 years old, I don't know if I'll still be coming aboard the county commission meetings. But she stayed through it. All right. While we're dealing with some technical difficulties here with pulling this item up. Commissioner? Commissioner? What is Aguave Bandido? What does that mean? It's meant Aguave Bandido. I don't know. I was, Bandido. I don't know, it's some kind of restaurant opening up in the Hamlet, and it's called. Bandido, Aguave Bandido.
Mayor, happy celebrated birthday.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I saw that, I'm like. It was Aguave Bandido.
Well, it was your favorite subject, sorry. We're pulling it up now. All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the 2025 hurricane season preview. Uh, we're going to touch on last year, 2024, quickly, and then talk about the 2025 season outlook. Few pointers about preparedness, and then we're going to have a short presentation from Public Works, and then Orange County Utilities, and then we'll conclude. All right, so 2024, what did it look like? We had 18 named storms, 14 is the average. We had 11 hurricanes, 7 is the average, and five major hurricanes, when 3 is the average. So of those, 10 made, 10 hurricanes made landfall, five of them in the U.S. For that, that is the second most on record for making U.S. landfalls, with five of them hitting the U.S. 425 total fatalities, 358 of those in the U.S. alone. So for the 2025 Atlantic hurricane season, we've got a 60% chance of having an above-normal season with 13 to 19 named storms, 6 to 10 hurricanes, and three to five major hurricanes expected. So this is some of the, I wanted to cover this with you all because timeline. We often get asked about hurricanes, you know, things that are out there. And we're always telling people, it's too early, it's too early. So at the six to seven day mark, this is when you see some blobs out there. Yellow being less than 40% chance of formation, orange, 40 to 60% formation. And then when you see the red blobs, those are the ones that are concerning because it's above 60% possibility of formation. With this, we had, um, for this, for the six to seven days out, when I'm talking about all these areas of interest that are coming out, every season we have over 80 Atlantic waves, waves coming off the African coast. Fortunately, a lot of them go north. They call them fish storms. But we have over 80 of them. So although I'm not telling you not to be concerned when you see all that stuff out there, but just, you know, monitor closely like we do. And when you see the red, that's when you need to start piquing your interest. At the three to five day mark, this is when we start seeing a little bit of the potential track forecast for the storm. We start looking at the wind speed probabilities and the time of arrival. But with that, National Weather Service and NOAA is really encouraging us to stop looking at the actual cone and look at the hazards that come with the probability, you know, of the impacts of the storm. So they really want us to focus on in the day one to day two, the National Weather Service is starting to overlay the hazards on the forecast maps. Talking about the wind, storm surge, you know, we can say that doesn't affect us, but when there's high storm surge, that's when all of the coastal counties come here to get shelter. But just really focusing on the hazards rather than just that cone. And just a quick note for Hurricane Milton, and I'm not sure if you all are aware of this or not, but the National Weather Service, prior to Milton arriving, issued 126 tornado warnings. And 36 of them actually touched down in the Treasure Coast area. And they were 50 miles away from Orange County, 50 miles sou- southern of, to us, from our county. So we were very fortunate with that tornado outbreak. And it was the second largest outbreak of tornadoes in the history of the U.S. in a single state in a single day. So for the hurricane season overall, 85% of the tropical storms and hurricanes form in the months of August, September, and October, with the peak of hurricane season being on September 10th. That doesn't mean they can't happen prior to or after, but this is the main zone where we really expect to see that higher amount of activity. Here's the tropical cyclone names, so for this year. And then talking about season preparedness, so there's a lot of activities that occur before, during, and after the storm. So we want to make sure that everybody is paying attention to those press briefings. You see that that is, the press briefings are listed on before, during, and after the storm. Uh, it is very important for us to get that messaging out to our public, whether it be where to get sandbags, where the shelters are open, you know, what the storm's doing right now. There's a lot of different meteorologists out there. We base our information that you receive through your tropical weather updates weekly or more frequently if you have, if we have something we're watching. But it's very important to pay close attention to all the information that Orange County government is putting out because we will be tracking closely and getting the critical information out ahead of any storm. After the storm, damage assessments, we go out quickly and get this done. All departments are coordinating the response and all of our partners to make sure that we try to get Orange County back to normal as quickly as possible. And then the largest phase of a disaster is the recovery. And that starts well before the storm and continues well after. Partnerships, we have many, over 200 partners that we work with on an ongoing basis. For this year, we have 47 Orange County Public Schools available for sheltering. And we also have our five magic gems. Sheltering takes a lot of work, a lot of people, a lot of partnerships, a lot of collaboration. So you see some of the primary partners here, but that is not inclusive of all. For community engagement, this is something we do year round. Hurricanes are not the only disaster that we handle. But a lot of media interviews across the county, really, Public Works as well. Social media continuing to push out that messaging, not just about the storm, but about the recovery topics. And then we meet with our partners throughout the year to stay in contact, make sure we're all working on the same mission. make sure we're all working on the same mission. The OCAlert.net, uh, is a good way for people to sign up and get emails and texts uh, ahead of any kind of, uh, expected impacts, or even algae blooms in a lake, or tornado warnings, but, um, and then OCFL Alert app is an application, and it is available on iPhone, iPad, or Android, so it's a good way to sign up and get those early notifications. We have the weather radio distributions and the battery-operated radios that we're gonna be giving out at the Hurricane Expo this weekend at Evans High School Gymnasium from nine to one, uh, and then we'll also have the emergency disaster guides. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, and I'll spend a few minutes reminding you of the work that Public Works does in response, in preparation and response for hurricanes. Of course, that includes our preparedness, our sandbag distribution, and our debris removal. Our operations teams have mapped and identified all of our flooding hotspots, our inlets, culverts, pipes, pumps, generators, lakes, weirs, and county-maintained ponds have been checked. Generators that we use for traffic control and other emergency response have been serviced. We have talked and had conversations with the water management districts and with the local utility companies, and those collaborations are ongoing year-round. We are very pleased that during the response to Hurricane Milton, the temporary pumps that are placed in Orla Vista and West Side Manor were able to prevent any flooding in those neighborhoods. In response to Hurricane Milton, we were able to provide a hundred and ninety thousand sandbags to our residents, which represents about nineteen thousand residents. We give out ten sandbags per household and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty cubic yards, which Google tells me is equivalent to twenty-four Olympic-sized pools of sand that were distributed prior to Milton. This is a collaborative effort across several departments and divisions, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and PEDS and other services there within. There are approximately a hundred county personnel that take part in the sandbag distribution. We have five sandbag locations that we have used historically. This year's sandbag locations will be Barnett Park, Horstman's Park, Blanchard Park, Bethlow Park, and South Orange Park. You will notice that Downey and Meadow Woods have been removed from this list and replaced with Blanchard and South Orange, based on the issues that we recognized during the sandbag distribution last year. Uh, it became difficult to get kids in and out of school and in and out of the after-school programs in those neighborhoods. We are also working to complete our maintenance of traffic so that we can address the traffic issues that always seem to come with the distribution of sandbags. As is the county's process and has been for the last twenty-plus years, we competitively bid and select our contractors. These are normally done on a three-year basis with a two-year renewal possibility. We have two debris removal contractors, Crowder Gulf and Ashbrit, which are two of the larger debris removal companies within the country, and debris monitoring contractor is Tetra Tech, and we have members of their team here in the audience with us today. Following Hurricane Milton, as I indicated, uh, we did remove debris. Roughly a hundred and seventy-eight thousand cubic yards of debris were removed over a ten-week period to reach substantial completion, and to date, we have expended just shy of four million dollars. As we look at our 2025 modifications, we, of course, following each event, each activation, enter into an actor, after-action report process where we ask some critical questions, where we respond to issues that we hear from your offices and from the residents of Orange County. In that process, we do talk with and also meet with our debris inspection teams, and they are ready to be deployed immediately following a hurricane or a debris generating event when it is deemed safe for them to do so. Our debris removal contractors, as I indicated, Crowder Gulf and Ashbrit, are activated just prior to an incident or a impending storm and are available to us through the storm and immediately thereafter. We have increased their base contract rate according to the contract and according to the Consumer Price Index for this season. Uh, we met with our contractors on May thirtieth of this year and went through and talked through all of our concerns and issues. They have assured us that they are ready and available and will be made available to Orange County in the event that it becomes necessary. We have also met with your aides, uh, a week ago, and went over some of the basic information of the coming hurricane season and provided you with information regarding, uh, hurricane response that could be shared with your local and your individual constituents. I will say, along with that, we are in the process of completing the procurement process for the Tiger Dam, and to have that ready for flood mitigation should that be necessary for some of our local roadways. Along with that, we have had a long conversation, standing conversations, with our partners at Utilities, who you will hear from here shortly, because debris is a county-wide process. Our debris contractors are ready to respond to debris that is three cubic yards or greater than three cubic yards. I typically say to folks, that's kind of the size of the standard oven you've got in your, your home. If you've got debris that's larger than that, then our debris contractors are ready and able to respond. If it's smaller than that, then it should be made compliant with the Utilities Yard Waste Guidelines. All of that information is available on the county website. The big initiative that we have going into this year that is different from prior years is an active and, uh, very aggressive process to engage local contractors. And as you know, we have to have, our primary contractors have to meet the federalization process for contracting services. However, they can bring onboard subcontractors that can work under their contract. So we have been actively working, and as of tomorrow afternoon, we'll have a small business, um, symposium workshop where our debris contractors will come and meet with what, right now, seems to be about twenty-one local businesses that have interest in assisting in the debris removal process following an emergency. And so we are hoping we can get those folks engaged and get them into their system and get them certified and ready to work immediately following such, of, such an event. The other piece is our push for communications and an update on our printed materials, as well as some new and refreshed outreach campaigns that will include, uh, a media day this Friday at Public Works. And we will have several of the media there, where we will have a joint session with Utilities to demonstrate, uh, the different types of debris and the different types of the information that we will pick up, from vegetative to mixed to, um, household goods, construction. So we will be able to show the citizens what debris looks like and how it is that it gets picked up. And with that, I will, uh, say thank you. We do have, as I said, this implementation process, and I do want to say, we are looking at a rebid of our contracts, potentially this coming fall, to be ready for implementation in 2026. We have a request for information we will be sending out soon to be able to look at how we scale and incentivize our rates for our debris removal. As an interior county, we may not be as greatly impacted, so how do we ensure that the rates we are paying our debris removal contractors remain competitive in a very aggressive and overly competitive market following events like Helene and Milton and the storms that we have seen in the past? So, uh, I will say that that will potentially include increased rates based on the amount of debris or the breadth of the storm, and consecutive events will be another category that we will look at, how we build that into the contractual obligations. With that, I will turn it over to, uh, Director Ed Torres from Utilities.
Thank you. All right, good afternoon. Uh, so for Orange County Utilities, uh, our main priority by far is the continuity of services, essential services to our community. We are, uh, and that's not only the storm, during the storm season, that's throughout the year, right? We, we're always providing those essential services. We're a twenty-four-seven operation, and we understand the criticality of being prepared. Um, this takes a lot of effort, a lot of practice by our staff. And for the past few months, we have been training, we have been conducting a lot of exercises, and at the end of April, we conducted what we call our Leadership Team All-Hands Exercises, uh, where we specifically discuss our storm preparations with our managers, assistant managers, communication staff, we coordinate with Public Works, and we really share ideas and lessons learned, and we adjust our plans accordingly. In May, we then conduct a really hands-on drill exercise with our Field Services Division. That's our largest division that maintains our water mains, all of our wastewater pump stations, over eight hundred and seventy of them, and they create their own mock storm where they practice the fuel deployment of generators, um, fuel routes, and do all the preparations, really hands-on practicing every year, right? We also have to have a lot of flexibility. Uh, we don't know what's coming at us, and we have to be prepared for whatever that is. So we do a lot of cross-training with our staff, fueling operations, opening the landfill, helping the folks at the landfill make sure that that landfill can open up if it's fully saturated with, you know, rainfall and so forth. Sometimes Public Works helps us with that, so we get all of those, uh, practice items in place. But as you can imagine, for us running twenty-four hours, the biggest challenge that we have is power, electricity. So that's why we have all of those mobile generators that we run in routes throughout the county, fuel them and so forth. Then we have stationary generators, our water plants, our wastewater treatment plants, and our master pump stations. Again, lots of effort, uh, not only during the storm season, but throughout the, the year. Um, I mentioned the regional water plants and water reclamation facilities. These are facilities that are running with a lot of automation, but just like when we were trying to connect the presentation, there's always Murphy's Law out there, right? So one of the exercises that we run is running these plants with zero automation, running them manually, so our operators are sharp, they know how to act under pressure, and they know how to keep those plants running, right? Uh, besides that, we make sure that all the maintenance is completed, that we have all the chemicals and resources that we need for the season at hand before the storm season. And lastly, I wanted to let you know that we continue to put pressure sensors through our distribution systems, or water pipes, or reclaim water pipes, so we can see any leaks, any broken water mains, and that just allows us to take any corrective actions swiftly. Now, I mentioned those pump stations, and we got plenty, and we manage them through our SCADA system, our GIS system, that's the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Systems. And we continue to look at our GIS boards, make them, dashboards, make them, uh, better, more, um, real-time. We can see what's happening with those pump stations, prioritize the allocation of staff, um, and resources where they're needed the most, live, real-time, as is going on. Um, super helpful for us to visualize those, uh, operations of our pump stations. Now, Ralphetta touched upon some of this, uh, we, as part of our operations, we do a lot of coordination specifically related to solid waste management, uh, with the landfill, the transfer stations, and with our haulers. Our communications group coordinates with Public Works, with County Communications, um, and they develop storm preparedness reminders and notifications for our customers, and for different scenarios, right? We talked about the before, during, and after storm scenarios. All of that has to be coordinated among all the different departments in the county to make sure that we're providing a cohesive message to our customers and our residents. That includes social media outreach, uh, reminding our customers to trim the trees and shrubs ahead of the storm season, uh, how to bundle the waste properly, right? Uh, so we don't get those calls. Uh, and we also highlight the importance, uh, highlight to our customers the importance of, the importance of having their account information updated with emergency information, so we can send those important, uh, messages to them. Um, as, as Ralphetta mentioned, we, uh, this coming Friday, we have the Media Demonstration Day, so we're gonna show, hey, what's three cubic yards, how does that look? What is sixty pounds, how much is it that we can put out there that our regular haulers can pick up, or is it something that is gonna be picked up by the debris contractors? That visual is gonna be important for the media, so that can go out to our customers. Again, lots of coordination, not only internal within our own department, but with Public Works, County Communication, and others, uh, within our greater county organization. And lastly, I wanted to let you know that we also, as a utility, coordinate with an organization called Florida Warn, where we provide assistance to other utilities throughout the state. So in every storm, pretty much, we have Orange County Utilities. Your staff has been out there to the Panhandle, to the West Coast, helping other utilities, but that works both ways, right? Hopefully not, but there may be a time where we need somebody else's help, uh, over here, and we're part of that organization. So with that, I wanted to let you know that we are indeed ready for another storm season, uh, again, with that emphasis on the continuity of services for our customers. So now I'll turn it over back to Chief Avery, and she can close with the conclusion.
All right, so what, what do we know? We know, uh, active sea- season is predicted again. Uh, hurricanes can impact without a direct strike. Uh, we talked about the center of the cone, it can go a hundred miles out. Major flooding's always possible, and that can be just from a quick downpour of rain. I know we've seen that a couple times over the last couple weeks. Uh, not all areas of the county will be affected the same. We can have the storm come through the east, east side of the county and not even touch the north side, so we always need to be aware of that. Uh, we ask everyone to follow the trusted sources of information. There's a lot of hype out there when those little different color waves come off of Africa, but follow your trusted source of information. Everybody at this point should have their disaster kit, disaster kit ready and be prepared for three to seven days. A great way to prepare is, uh, cleaning out those milk jugs safely, putting them in the back of the fridge, put them in each of the freezer shelves, and that way, if we lose power, we have a little bit of a freestanding cooler. Knowing the risk, uh, folks focusing, uh, on if you're in a flood zone, making sure that flood insurance is purchased, that's one of the biggest things we can tell people. I know it's not, uh, cheap to get, but it's better than having your home flooded and having that risk of damage. Uh, focusing on the hazards, not the category, uh, staying away from looking at that cone and actually looking at the specific hazards that can come with the storm. We have seen, over the last couple years, the rapid intensification of storms that is happening more and more. So, uh, Milton, I think, within one day, went up like two to three categories. We're seeing that time and time again. So focusing on what potential hazards can happen here, and not the category of storm you see right now. Planning and preparing in advance, uh, one way to do that is to come out, uh, to the Hurricane Expo on Saturday at Evans High School Gymnasium, then all kinds of, I think we have over sixty vendors coming out this year, so a lot of safety tips, a lot of messages. Amy Swayze will be there to give us a, a hurricane update. And then one thing we haven't talked a lot about is, uh, the post-storm heat risk. So when, after the storm, when that power's out and the heat that we're experiencing- So when, after the storm, when that power's out and the heat that we're experiencing today, just making sure that people know which community center, which library, what location they can go to to cool off a bit, make sure they're drinking lots of water. And with that, I will ask Ralphetta and Ed and I are here, if you have any questions.
There may be questions.
All right.
We're going to start with Commissioner Uribe.
All right. I actually had a, Chief, you did a great job at briefing us already. And I did ask a question, and I want to go ahead and reaffirm it since you gave it to me, is that let's just say we are, look, someone who doesn't live here or is not connected loses touch with somebody who may be in a shelter. You guys keep track, so that if I've lost a family member that's made their way to a shelter or we're looking to help someone, you guys do keep track to help families stay connected or concerns that we may receive of folks that aren't here.
Absolutely. For anybody like that, they should call 311 or report that they're trying to find their loved one. And we will see that in the Emergency Operations Center, then we can reach out to the shelter managers and get in contact and figure out where they are.
Yeah, and I think that's great. What I wanted to follow up with, it was more the debris pickup, if I could ask you. And by the way, I want to just preface to say, I love the flyer that you guys are looking for contractors to put their bid in. I shared it with my group. And also, Chief, I've shared the expo as a priority for this weekend. You saw it? Okay, I think we all did, so.
The newsletters, all of you are amazing, so thank you.
Yes. Have we ever considered getting with our current haulers who are contracted in our sectors to pick up the debris? It just seems financially, would it make more sense to extend debris pickup to the haulers in the area? Because as Mr. Gregory, is he here, David Gregory? No, he's not here today?
He's not, but it is.
Okay, and I know he's always in the hot seat, right? Like he says, no one ever cares when your trash is picked up, they only care when it's not. But one of the biggest communication issues we had, and I'll just put waste management for me, Zone 3, which is no longer waste management, which I'm really sad about, is you have your debris pickup, which was a single, you know, it was tedious, okay? And you guys did a great job considering the circumstances. But waste management comes and does our regular pickup. And our constituents are like, hey, you're not picking it up. And they're like, hey, that's not our responsibility. And then when it got prolonged, because this did take a lot longer than expected, then it's older and so forth. So waste management folks would tell the residents, bundle it, which is the rule on normal pickup. Have we ever looked price-conscious-wise to see, is it worth? Or are these haulers who are in their zones bidding to see if it makes more financial sense since they're there already? And they do do big pickups, you know, like on the, for me, it's on Fridays, I know. And I'm being a little too pointed here, but you know how we have big haulaway days? Where we can have big items, mattresses and all that. Have we ever looked or considered that as an option?
Tornado. I will. I will say to you, Commissioner, we have that conversation with utilities. And I'm going to ask Director Torres to talk about the state statutes that they have to adhere to within their guidelines for their haulers.
So Commissioner Uribe, that sounds like a great idea, right? But you know firsthand that every season, regardless of the storm season or not, if we have a big storm hitting us or not, or yard waste increases significantly during the, you know, during the growing season, right? So that's one, those trucks are running around, you're right. But they have a capacity, right, that they can feel. If we have a big storm, then they're not even able to collect all of the stuff that they normally would do. They have to do several, you know, passes, then the next week, the week after, the week after. Even if they bundle it, you have seen that they, you know, they may have it across the entire street. So that's the limitation, one of the limitations that they have. The truck has so much space there. Their guidelines on how long those drivers can be out there, those are DOT guidelines. But what Ralphetta was referring, there's a state statute as to the garbage collection companies being able, right? They have to provide those essential services constantly, but then being involved in the storm collection, storm debris collection. So that's some of the issues and challenges that we have there. But they wouldn't have enough trucks or staff to go through that other than what they're doing, because they have the number of cubic yards that they can carry in that truck. They're already doing that route with those drivers. And it's not their regular, you know, three cubic yards that we're picking out of given house. They have sometimes the entire street lined up with. So it sounds great, but equipment, staffing, and really limitations that they have in terms of hours of driving and.
Well, can I ask a follow-up question? All right, so I understand what you're telling me, and that makes sense, because we would literally have the haulers pick up half the street and not the other half. And it could have been because they've reached capacity in their truck. What about setting, the bad thing about this one, I'll say, I'll just talk about myself. It took until Christmas to get mine picked up, right? I didn't, my husband was like, I'm just going to take it to the landfill. And I said, you will not take it to the landfill, because my neighbors are going to think that they picked mine up and not theirs. So I made my husband keep mine and run it in my house. And it's taken me a while to get that color back in my grasp. But have we ever looked at timelines to where we could consider 90 days after? You know, where now you're, because I will also admit, you suddenly see people who immediately after hurricane, they just bring everything to the front, right? Your neighbors help neighbors. But then you also notice, three, four weeks after a hurricane, suddenly people have debris. And one thing that I saw that I did not appreciate is private tree companies were coming and telling people, just put it there. And you know, they get paid to haul away stumps and all that, but they were taking advantage of our process, right? So my question is, have we ever looked at like a timeline where that could possibly be added? So now you're not looking at the masses, but you're looking at something more controlled. Because Ralphetta knows, we had constituents where it's, it makes sense when you ran out of space and those constituents were left and it took, you know, having to get it back. So just curious if we can think outside the box, because you guys get the calls, but we get the yells, you know?
Oh, we're getting the yells too. But at the end of the day, again, those contractors or hauler contractors are going to continue to go out there within those guidelines within their contract, continue to pick up their three cubic yards. And again, it may take them several weeks to go through that, combined with the haulers, with the debris contractor that Public Works would have for that emergency. But in terms of the timing, I know we looked at several options there, and I'll let Ralphetta go into that.
Yes, Commissioner, we, one of the first things we do following the storm is a debris estimation for the county. And we try to, in that process, categorize what we consider high, medium, and low impacts. And then in conjunction with the contractors, we devise a strategy for cleaning the county based on those areas that are highly impacted, medium impacted, low impact. And then working with the utilities to partner to say, what is that timeframe? And I think our contractors will tell you, I always start with, can we get this done in 60 days? And they look at me and say, no. No. Or let us go back and do some more assessment. And so we will then strategize on what that timeframe is. The state this year, or last year following Milton, actually gave us a timeline based on operating 24/7. And we, in our review of that process, said, as a county, we did not feel our residents were, would be open to a debris contractor in their neighborhood at 3 o'clock in the morning. But we were able to, the initial timeline that we were given by the state chief was 120 days, is that right? We reached substantial completion in a little better than 90 days, working sunup to sundown, seven days a week. And so we try to time that out, given what we know about the situations. And then, of course, if there are additional impacts that occur. Helene did not generate enough debris within Orange County for us to activate our debris removal contractors. Milton did. And so, of course, you did have some debris that was already on the street that exceeded the amount that Utilities was able to pick up from Helene that then became a part of some of that stack of debris on the street from. And unfortunately, we cannot see into houses when we're doing the assessments. And so when residents begin to bring things out of the house, because they may have had some water leakage, water damage, then we have to make those assessments. So we are continually, we meet on a daily basis with our debris removal contractors and assess and make modifications in our strategies and our plans. And in response, we have hotspot teams that when we hear from you, when we hear from a particular constituent, that then we dispatch to respond to those issues.
And I want to give you also kudos, because during Ian, we had a problem where you guys could see a truck where it went. But it didn't necessarily mean they did both sides of the road. And you did better customer service during Milton. That was not as much of a problem, so I want to give you kudos for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, thank you so much. I cannot believe we're already back here, but we are. So this is my annual plea to those of you who are paying attention. You know, if you are a soccer mom, if you live in Florida, go to the beach, you've got containers like this. You've got your own water bottles, you've got your own. Use them to get your water supply from our amazing Orange County water before anything happens. Don't go out and fill the, line the pockets of our plastic water bottle companies that really, I think, to some extent profit off this time of year. And so do that. I love the idea of filling up the empty gallon jugs. We still have ice in ours from last storm season that we do. We throw in to a cooler if we need to use it, so it ends up being useful no matter what happens. So I thank you for that idea, and I love sharing those ideas during storm season. That educational piece continues to be, I think, so critical, and Orange County does it really well. Thank you so much, Chief Avery. So, quick questions, well, not quick maybe. The hotspots map, can we get that? Can the commissioners' offices get those hotspots maps? And I will tell you why. I think we a lot of times get calls in anticipation, right? Because people, quite frankly, are traumatized from last storm season or one three years ago. And so it would be nice to say, hey, we have our eyes on that. We've actually been mapping. I won't share it if it's something that's not supposed to be shared, because I know it's modeling. But I think it's important for our constituents to know that we have eyes on it, that this is where, you know, we have some thoughts and we want to make sure we're being proactive. So those maps would be helpful. And then the sandbags every year, obviously, I think it's something that we want to make sure people are taking advantage of. Orange County, we have big operations, it's much more difficult to tailor those services. But we always hear from folks that either have elderly family members or disabled family members. And I just wanted to find out if you thought there was an opportunity for us to do some programming this year for some of the folks that wouldn't be able to go out with their own shovel and sandbag.
So yes, the answer to your first question is yes. We can get you the maps and the list of the hotspots. With the sandbag, the first piece I will offer that I failed to say during my presentation is to have those residents call 311. We have a response team that is available to get them scheduled to come. It's typically to our location at 4200 South John Young and pick up sandbags for residents. One of the offers that we made to your aides last week was to work with you on something between now and the height of hurricane season, not immediately preceding an event. And so, Commissioner Wilson, I will say, I've already heard from your team with an idea of an event you are looking at doing for your constituents. So we can provide you with some sand and some bags and some, an opportunity. I offered one per Commissioner. So, because we have to kind of manage that process. But at least something that you could then market and share with your constituents as a way to be proactive in this process. And I would encourage residents, if they are interested in sandbags. We've tried several seasons to do a sandbag week to cut down on the number of cars in the queue line immediately following, and we just have not gotten the response for those types of events. But if the.
Well, let me ask you this, because this may be kind of the intersection of the last two items. But for those areas that are on the hotspots for flooding, you know, can we be more proactive there, right? So the idea is, those would be the people you would really want to participate in sandbag.
In sandbags, yes. I'm looking at my roads and drainage manager who's in the room, because his team is one of those teams that has to be ready and available to us.
I know, and God bless him, I stood out there on the side of Reams Road with him last year. And I, I'm so grateful, incredibly grateful. But it is, you know, you kind of think, okay, would it have helped if, you know, if we'd gotten?
What I will, what I will say is, if there are residents, and I've had a few who've sent me an email already who've already come and picked up their sandbags. But there again, sandbags is always kind of that. It's a wonderful opportunity for citizens to feel that they are doing something to be proactive in lessening the impact.
But if they're not in a flooding hotspot, that may not be.
So we can, we can have that discussion. And see how we might be able to offer something that might be available.
Okay, perfect. That's what I was thinking, just trying to, you know, kind of work smarter, not harder.
Not harder, yes, yes.
And then, and I am speaking for our experience, so I don't want to impose this on my colleagues. But the mapping that was used, the GIS mapping that was used for the debris pickup that had like the three indicators that it was mapped for, that had been served. It created a haves and have-nots across the county and sometimes on the same street, where to the point that was being made about when those trucks get to capacity, they go back to drop off the stuff, and that may be it for the day. It's really hard to explain that to a resident who then clicks on the map and sees that their road had been, had been cleaned. So I love the idea of GIS mapping, right? And I think even seeing sort of that high, medium, low impact, something that gives people an understanding that we are looking at this holistically and we are getting there, but not creating that haves and have-nots, that there wasn't enough precision to make them understand, it's okay, they didn't forget about you, you're still going to get service, but yours may be tomorrow instead of today.
And I have, the GIS team within Public Works falls under my purview and have talked with Director Banks and County Administrator Brooks. And we are in the process of modifying that mapping component. And we realize the heartache that those lines caused last year and are looking at some different ways to present that information so that it is accurate, but also not as specific as what those lines, the expectation that those lines generated of our residents.
Perfect. I think we're on the same page there. So the high, medium, and low impact assessment for sort of that prioritization, is that based on the storm or on the actual infrastructure? What is that?
Both. We do a first-day assessment that is a full county. We have the county broken into 42 sectors. And we do an assessment of all of those sectors. On what may be a second day for our team, we will go back to those areas that we have marked particularly as high-impact and maybe high-medium impact in order to see what the realities are. And that may not be day two, that may be day three or day four, to allow those residents who are pulling things out of their backyard the time to cut and move. And our debris removal contractors and our monitoring contractor, Tetra Tech, also has persons on the ground. And they are bringing back to us maps that they have marked to say, here is where we too are seeing those impacts. Now let's overlay those together. Fire Rescue provides us with information. We're getting information from several different.
I was going to say.
311 is getting those phone calls. So our GIS team is layering all of those components on top of each other in order that we can then create a more accurate picture of where the debris is. And I will also offer what type of debris it is, because there are different types of debris. And the vegetative stuff generally gets picked up first, because it's typically. And the vegetative stuff generally gets picked up first because it's typically the larger of the debris types. And then, we may come back and have to do household construction, et cetera, et cetera, and some of those, or mixed. And, and that is the big thing I want our residents to understand, is that if you put a green tree on the street with a brown or white or black plastic bag, that is now a mixed debris pile. So, it will not be picked up in that first round of debris. So, those are the types of information we're going to be putting out this year more prolific to the residents so that they understand some of those components.
And if I can, if I can add a wrinkle to that assessment, one of the things that I was really worried about last year, and I know you heard from me, so I appreciate your patience. In an older neighborhood, something, you know, like Tildenville, where some of those are sort of cottage-type homes that are wood, and then they have mature growth, which then creates more debris. And so, there was definitely a lot of vegetative debris that was out there for such a long time because, of course, the storm season sort of wraps up the rainy season and then we have a lot of dry days. I was very concerned about fire because you would see on very busy roadways, people driving by and a cigarette getting flicked out of a window and a pile of brown leaves and vegetative debris, all of five feet away from a wooden entrance to a home. And, you know, I know that we're doing the best we can, but that felt like a special risk to me. And I didn't know how to articulate that. I don't know if there's any piece of that that gets put into that, you know, low, medium, and high risk or high need. But if I can try to articulate those places or get with you ahead of time to show you where I saw that--
We look, one of the other pieces that we do is we do have the property appraisers' aerials. And so, we can see prior storm conditions for the county, especially when it comes to tree cover. So, we, we would be, we would be open to that conversation as well as to those concerns.
All right. And then, I also just want to say thank you to opening up the idea of getting the additional contractor local. Because I think we all understood after Milton that, you know, my sons in school in North Carolina, they were evacuated. I got it by driving him home. We drove past everyone going up there to do the work and they needed it. But if we are able to scale in and use some of our own businesses here in Orange County to help with that debris removal, I think it's a great idea. All right. My last question, and I promise I'll pass it on. This one is for Ed. So, knowing that you all really have to look at that power to your stations and power to all the activity to keep things running for the residents, and you do those generator backups, are those diesel generators?
Yes, some of them are. And, and you saw the list, we got plenty of them. Some stations, the master pump stations have generators on site, but yes.
Is there any opportunity in the future, knowing that you have been sort of the champion of harnessing the sun, to do some of the heavy lifting of utilities, for us to have something that might be able to diversify that fuel source just in case, right? We don't know what's going to happen in the future, and you know how I feel about the fossil fuel thing. But on top of that, in order to make sure that if, for heaven, you know, heaven forbid, we have no ability to get that supply line, what then?
Yeah. Well, Commissioner, you know, let me start backwards. You know that Orange County Utilities and under the, really the vision of the mayor, we have been really proactive with renewable energy, sustainability, resilience, you name it. But there's a hierarchy of things that we do. So, number one, in terms of emergency preparedness and planning, we work with Duke and we work with OUC to show them what our emergency sites, where critical sites are, the importance of those sites, and trying to fortify that power supply, right? We're thinking about the storms right now, but every, I tell my staff, every cold front that comes in comes with a line of thunderstorms and tornadoes and everything else, and we lose power with some of those. So, we, every year, we provide a list, both through OUC and Duke, with all of our critical facilities where we have lost power, and they try to fortify those as best as they can, right? Murphy's Law, we don't know what's happening. I have several presentations that I talk about 20 inches of rain in one area and four on another. When you look at the wind situation, completely different in one side of the county, too. So, so that's one. We start with that. In terms of renewable energy, you know that our plants are the ones that are, or treatment plants are the ones that are running 24/7. That's why you have seen the bulk of our efforts dedicated to our water reclamation facilities and our water treatment plants to the tune of covering 60% of the power at some of these facilities, 30%, and other ones, and we continue to do that. When you look at 870 pump stations, the reality of it is we got a limited footprint to put solar power there, and then we're more exposed to the wind condition and so forth. So, we're doing the best we can with, you know, looking at that hierarchy of potential redundancies. But we'll, we'll look into it where we have the space.
Well, I'm so grateful for the work, and I want to thank you for sort of being on that front edge of getting, I don't know, the out-of-the-box thinking in order to make sure we're safe in the future. Thank you.
Okay. This seems, feels like to me, we're kind of just dragging here. So, I'm going to ask staff brevity, answer the questions, answer the questions. I'll ask members of the board, answer questions so we can just kind of move this along a little bit. It seems like it's kind of dragging to me. All right, Commissioner Moore.
Most of my questions were answered. The only thing that I was having problems with was the tree contractors dumping. And I was really upset on Magnolia Homes Road because the folks had worked so hard to improve it. So, I was wondering, Ralph, if you had any advice about stopping these tree contractors just dumping and ruining our rights away? In fact, Puppet Brooks had to come in behind and reside whole sections of that road. And I just wondered if you had any words of advice because that was probably one of the worst scenarios I had to deal with, besides what's already been mentioned.
Unfortunately, it's an issue we deal with each year or following each storm. We have worked with code enforcement and we've worked with the sheriff's office if we can find those perpetrators, those persons who are doing the work and leaving it there. But it's going to be information to the citizens as to, as well as to hold them accountable.
Maybe we're going to have to suggest they put some cameras out there because we, like you were talking about, there are spots and I know where it is. And so, maybe we'll just have to put some cameras out there to try and catch them. Because it's evocative when they do that and it's, it's, it's really devastating. Well, thank you for your work, and we keep trying to improve and get better each year, but they're always trying situations and we, I appreciate your commitment.
Commissioner Martinez-Simret, you had your question answered.
I just wanted to say thank you for, to Public Works for moving that sandbag distribution, and thank you to Chief Avery for keeping us safe. Thank you.
All right. I think we have gone through all of the questions at this point. I thank you all for the comprehensive update. And you all glanced over the Atlantic Tropical Cyclone names. I hope we don't get to see Hurricane Tanya this year, or Hurricane Jerry, plenty of these other ones as well. So, with that, thank you all very much to those who are in the audience for your patience. We stand adjourned.